It's nine o'clock. It's time to start a meeting. Is everybody ready up here? Everybody ready down here? All right, well, let me move to the front and we'll start with the invocation. And we have scheduled a football player to say our invocation this morning. Trenton Massey, a senior at TLC. If you would come up, please, sir. Good morning, Trenton.
Good morning.
And I'll give you the microphone.
All right, if y'all don't just bow your heads with me and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for today. Thank you for gathering us all here. And thank you for the opportunity to just be here and honor this city. And I pray that all the great things we do from here on out just glorify you, Lord. And I just want to pray for the city right now, Jesus. I want to pray for rain. We really need it. I just pray that the leaders of the city, Lord, that your presence will be seen through them. And again, I just want to thank you for today and for so many blessings. In the name of your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And now, to help me with the pledge, I've got Mr. Truett Bailey, who is a kindergarten student at Angelo Catholic, and his brother Davis Bailey, who is in the second grade. And if you gentlemen will come forward, we will say the pledge. Y'all ready to go?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I don't know who started that practice, having kids up here to help us with that pledge, but it was a wonderful idea. You guys did great. Thank you so very much. We have a...some special presentations this morning to make to one of our own. Brian Groves, who's a multimedia coordinator for the city of San Angelo. Brian was recently selected as one of the Standard Times. Twenty Under Forty Honorees, recognizing accomplished young professionals in our community. And there's more. He is also being recognized today as the multimedia coordinator for the city of San Angelo for the six statewide video awards that our office won at last month's annual convention for the Texas Association of Texas Communication Officers and advisors, and included five second-place awards and one first-place honor. That's got bad, hasn't it? I gotta read some more, though. And this kind of tells about the honors that they won. The city of San Angelo's Public Information Office won six statewide awards, one first-place, five second places for its programming on SATV, that's Channel 17, at the annual conference of the Texas Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors on Thursday night. San Angelo took top honors in the use of humor category for a commercial starring swimsuit-clad Parks and Recreation Director Carl White. And that's worth watching, people. It's worth watching. I can't describe it, so I'll just say you have to watch it. About the opening weekend of the Love Municipal Pool, when shown at Thursday's award dinner, the spot brought down the house. The pool commercial also won a second-place award for event program. San Angelo won second-place awards in the following category: interview-talk show, public health-public safety, partnership production, and the Kurt Uglent Programming Impact Award. And I would like to present this to Mr. Brian Groves, our...well, you have the...you've already got the names, don't you? I just want to recognize him and say thank you. We're very proud of you, Brian.
It's an honor for...to be selected among one of the Twenty Under Forty Honorees, especially when we have so many young, great young professionals at the city. So to be named amongst those is very humbling. With the six statewide awards, I think we kind of came out of nowhere. We were every...over the couple of days of the conference, everybody was kind of surprised that San Angelo was even there. So that was really exciting, and it's an honor to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That's not yours. And we have one more award this morning. This will be for our vocational...and you guys start walking up to the front here as I read this, please. And you teachers and anyone else who wants to be recognized. This is our vocational instruction for students with disabilities who have mastered the basic skills necessary to learn in community workplace settings in addition to the conventional school environment. These students are provided opportunities to train at local businesses. Data is collected related to the student's strengths and the weaknesses to assist students toward mastery of individual education plans, goals, and objectives, and to make instructional changes as necessary. And I am glad to honor you guys here and glad to see you here this morning. Who gets to make speech? All of you gonna make speeches?
Well, I'm...well, we all can.
Let's have someone say a word.
Well, I just want to say that it's a pretty big honor for me, Alberto, Jared, and Court to be recognized today in front of all of you. And it all...if it weren't for our...if it weren't for our coordinator, Ms. Flores, we wouldn't have been given the opportunities that we were given to do something like this. And I also want to say that it's been fun being part of this program. And I hope that our futures will be bright, as well as all the people who are in the program right now through Central and Lakeview.
Anyone else?
I would just like to thank the city of San Angelo for giving our students this amazing opportunity to help prepare them for their future after graduating from high school for employment by not only the city of San Angelo, but other businesses in our community help prepare our students for future employment to be successful in the community. So I'd just like to thank San Angelo, city of San Angelo, for that.
Now, we're going to talk to one of here. Up here in the tech room. See the teacher. You know her name. Hold that flag up so they can see it, but that away. And these following recognitions are not on the agenda because it didn't happen until late Friday night. But I've got two groups of kids here today that I want to recognize, and I want to brag on, and I want to congratulate, and I want you all to meet them so that the whole city knows how much...how much they mean to us. Come up, Bobcats. I was here in 1966 when our Bobcats won the state, and we had one loss that year. These guys have won, and I'm looking for the exact same results this year. But I've got some Bobcat football players here, and I just wanted these guys to come up and be recognized and let us tell you how very proud of you that we are, and we're behind you, and we're proud of you. Introduce yourselves and make a statement if you would.
I'm Jonathan Flores. I'm a defensive player for the Bobcats, and I'd just like to thank the whole city of San Angelo. It's been a lot of support for us this year, and we'd just like to thank you guys.
I'm John Garcia, running back on the offensive side. I'd like to thank all of y'all for all y'all's support, and go Bobcats.
My name is Brayden Lee. I play offensive line, and I just want to thank all y'all for all y'all's support. We wouldn't be where we are right now if it wasn't for you guys, and just want you all to come out and support us this Saturday at 1:00.
I'm Brent Davis. Want to thank the mayor, the council, the city of San Angelo for all the support and the recognition today. These young men have worked really hard to build this program, and it's paying off. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Y'all do well now. Proud of you.
Go Cats.
Go Cats. And also Friday night, we had another San Angelo team that won and are in the playoffs, and these guys have not been beat at all. Perfect record. TLC Eagles, if y'all would come forward and be recognized, and let me tell you how proud of you that I am. And we've also got some cheerleaders. Y'all come up here, too. This is a...this is a group effort. When you're able to be as successful as these guys have been, it takes everyone in the school. Very proud of you. Want you to introduce yourself, your position, and then we'll get a picture. Start with you, sir.
I'm Trey Mayberry, quarterback, and I just want to thank y'all for letting us be recognized here today.
I'm Chris Maris, DE. I just want to thank y'all for the support and just hope y'all keep supporting us.
I'm Trenton Massey, and I'm linebacker for TLC, and I couldn't have said it any better than the Bobcats. Thank y'all for y'all's support, and go Eagles.
I'm Brandon Garcia, running back. I just want to say thank you for your support and glad to be in San Angelo.
My name's Stephanie Swarrenjen. I'm a varsity cheerleader, and I just want to say thank you for all the support from our city because we wouldn't be the team or school that we are without y'all.
Okay. I'm Rebecca Way. I'm a varsity cheerleader, and I wanted to say thank y'all for supporting us, even if y'all don't show up to our games, but I can see on Facebook whenever y'all support us because we are a community and we are a team.
My name's Isabel Rosales. I'm also a varsity cheerleader, and I just want to thank y'all for all the support y'all give.
Come up here and introduce yourself. We've got...because our cheerleaders are just as important as our kids, so y'all come up and introduce yourself. Texans, I'm sorry.
I'm Karina Valdez, and I'm a Central Texan. I just want to say thank you for supporting us at halftime.
I'm Karen Martinez. I'm very honored to be here, and I want to thank y'all for supporting us and everything y'all do. We really appreciate it.
I'm very proud of y'all, very proud of our Texans, of our Bobcats, of our Eagles, and do well. All right, we are about ready now for the public comment. I do need to make mention of the fact that Daniel was here, Valenzuela, our city manager, but there is a meeting going on today in Odessa between the West Texas Water Partnership, which is Midland, San Angelo, and Abilene. And we've got a meeting with Odessa today. Hopefully, maybe we can get some more partnerships. So Daniel has been sent to the meeting, so Brother Dane here will be in his stead today. Now is the time that we take public comment. Let me read the...read the legals here, and then we will take public comments. So the council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to move to the regular agenda for public comment. On public hearing items, public input will be received on each item immediately following the council discussion and prior to any action on the item. Each member of the public should make the remarks from the podium, begin by stating their name. Remarks by each citizen will be limited to three to five minutes unless waived by a council member for all speaking on that matter. No individual shall be allowed to speak more than once on any subject until every citizen wishing to comment has done so. So we will start with the public first. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to approach the council or speak to the council or have a statement for the council or for the citizens that is not on the regular or consent agenda? If there is anyone in the public that wishes to speak, this is your opportunity. Please come forward. Come forward, Jeff, Kathy. And if you would, ma'am, state your name, and then you've got three to five.
I'm Kathy Ballard. I've worked for the Concho Valley Workforce Development Board. As many of you know, for about a year and a half, we've been working, trying to find out what's happening in the energy situation. And all of our efforts with the colleges and the Chamber of Commerce and the Workforce Board and many other community partners have culminated into a West Texas Energy Consortium, and they're having their first meeting, their first conference, in Big Spring on December 3rd. I know that's a council day, but I just wanted to urge anyone who can possibly attend that meeting to do so. I've given Alicia some handouts. If you'd like to get one, there's a website on there where you can register. If you know someone you'd like to send, please send them. You have to register by November the 25th. At this meeting, they will have the first study that UTSA has been contracted to provide for us, and it'll cover several counties, I think 16 in all. But it's important that the city of San Angelo be involved because, as you all know, we have a lot going on here that's a direct result of the energy companies moving this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Also know that Trinidad Gary is here, and I believe that Trinidad is the chair of this. Trinidad, do you have anything you want to add to that, sir?
No, I think Kathy said it extremely well, and we look forward to seeing you at the conference. Thank you.
And I realize, Michael, that this is a council meeting day, but I do think it's imperative that we have someone from our city management, administration at this meeting, whether you, Daniel, or Rick, or someone else.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Do I have further public comment, please? Come ahead, Jerry. You know the drill, buddy.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. My name is Jerry C. I'm a member of WTOS and attend St. Paul Baptist Church. And good morning, Mr. Pro Tem, Mayor, gentle...lady, gentleman. As you know, at WTOS, we're concerned with the city of San Angelo, the entire city. We're concerned with our communities. We're concerned with the church and the people of our communities and city. And just the other day, I was down there on that on-road, going on to...going on to the highway here across from McDonald's, and I was sitting there waiting for the traffic. I was taking a right going on to the avenue, and I saw this kid, you know, and he had dust all in his hair and everything, and thinking, kids are kids. And I was thinking, maybe this kid had fallen off, you know, the side, like they don't always walk on the sidewalk. And I thought he'd fell off the...you know, off the side of the road. And as I was going up, he stood up, and he was brushing himself off and all of that. And as I went a little bit further, I saw him bend over and pull another kid out of that pipe, you know? And they were up in this pipe, this drain pipe that goes across under the highway over toward McDonald's. Now, this is dangerous. This is very dangerous. And I looked at that. These kids were maybe a little bit taller than this...than the little fella that was here today, but he was a little butterball. And the other one was just about his height or size, and he should...looked like they were...they should have been in junior high or...or grade school. Excuse me, I'm having a problem this morning. This is very dangerous. This is a death ready to happen to one of our children. There is no security against these kids going up in those pipes, you know? And I think it's something that you gentlemen should be made aware of. I went across the street over by McDonald's to see, did they have access to get into those pipes on that side because they were crawling out, and that's an awful small pipe. So I looked in the connector box. I don't know if it's big enough for them to crawl across there and make a turnaround to come back out. But either way, if an animal run in there on them while they're going in there, they can't turn around, so, you know? And the kid come up missing, we won't even know where they are. So that thing is a...that's a very dangerous spot, and we need the council to get with the state, whoever's responsible, and put grates over the end of those pipes to keep our children from playing in there, you know? Because kids are gonna...kids are gonna be kids. I was, too. I got in my high tan a lot of times for doing things I wasn't supposed to do. And that's dangerous, and they don't realize that. And I thank you very much for your time, and it's something really to consider because our children are a danger. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Shane Kelton, did you hear all of that, sir? And you know, just as another note on this, Jerry, I talked to Tracy Kane at Texas DOT. There's kids crossing that street going to McDonald's from Central, and it is...that also is very dangerous. And I have asked Tracy maybe to do something to market kids crossing or some signage or something because there's other problems with that intersection other than what she spoke about, but I appreciate you bringing that forward. Jeff, did you need to speak to us, sir? Come forward, Jeff.
I won't take up too much of your time. My time with the city is only a few more hours at this point, but I just wanted to say thanks to everyone in the community for, you know, taking me seriously. It gives a...probably a little odd taking advice from someone that looks like they should be taking college entrance exams, but I want to thank everyone for that. I've advised them on a lot of important life decisions with property and things like that. And secondly, to city staff. Oh, I don't know. I'd rather talk about zoning, to be honest with you, but I wasn't coming up with a whole hell of a lot to give to city staff to thank them for what they've done for me, so this is what I'd settled on. There's a flag that's gonna fly over the Capitol today, and it's dedicated to everyone at city staff that's helped me. Thank you.
And that was Jeff Hines. Jeff has been in our planning department for the last couple of years. And another claim to fame he has, he went to high school with Tony Romo. So Jeff, we wish you the best of luck.
Jeff's done a terrific job for us, which we're really sad to see him go, but it's an opportunity to be closer to home, and so we encourage him and send our best wishes with him.
Any further public comment? This is your opportunity. If there be no more further public comment, then I will ask the council, are there any comments? Are there any statements? Is there anything which the council would like to speak about at this time? Right wing? Johnny?
Mayor, I do have something. You know, I've got a...I wanted to stress to all the citizens out there. I got a call from a citizen a number of days ago pertaining to his water bill. If you folks out there aren't paying attention to your bill, you need to because this gentleman was showing...he was using on an average about $5,000 to $8,000 gallons a month, and he came up with a bill that showed $65,000...$65,000 gallons. And, you know, it never dawned on him, you know, that something might be wrong. So I would stress that you guys get with the water department and let them know what is something, you know, throw up a red flag or something. We were able to help him out. He was going to visit Mary Cleveland yesterday. But it's amazing how folks just, you know, he was...he made a $600 payment on it and didn't even think twice about it. So I encourage you guys to look at your bill close, and if something seems out of the ordinary, please, you know, call in, call somebody for some help.
That's a good point, Johnny. Those people are there to help when those situations arise. Also, that could be a situation where a leak has developed, and there's a process for helping people out when they have that kind of situation.
And while I'm at it, do the staff not keep track of, you know, numbers going up like that on individual bills? You know, with 33,000 residents out there, or water bills, I guess it'd be hard to do, but...
There is a process for that. We'd be glad to follow up with you sometime.
Well, bottom line, just keep your eye on your bill, you know? If nothing else, thank you.
Any further comment from council? Brother Vardeman?
I just wanted to say if I leave quickly, I'm gonna be a grandpa this morning, and she's in the hospital, and so we'll...I'll be here as long as I can and go when I have to.
Hope you get twins. Is there anything on the agenda, on the consent agenda, that anyone on the council would like to pull and place on regular agenda for discussion? Right wing clear? Left wing? Okay, then we are ready to move to our consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to accept it.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Farmer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got three seconds. I'm gonna take Don's. Motion has been made. Do we approve the consent agenda as presented? Is there any...is there any discussion from council on the consent? Do I have any discussion from the public on the consent agenda? Then I will call for the...I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there is any opposed, please say nay. Put a 7-0 on that one, please, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I realize that item 16 is the third item and should move fast, but a group has asked if they could be placed first because most of their people do have to leave that are here today. So it's council's pleasure.
I don't have a problem with it. Does anyone have a problem with moving 16 up? Okay, let's move 16 up because we do have a lot of people here that's interested in this, and let's deal with 16. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Exhibit A, zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances City of San Angelo, Z1328, Greg Hewling, and ordinance amending Chapter 12, Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances City of San Angelo, Texas, which said Exhibit A of Chapter 12 adopts zoning regulations, use districts, and zoning map in accordance with the comprehensive plan by changing the zoning and classification of the following property to wit. And unaddressed five-acre tract located approximately 280 feet south of the intersection of Southland Boulevard and Green Meadow Drive. This property specifically occupies the community of a subdivision Block 1, Section 1, lots 1 and 2 in western San Angelo, changing the zoning classification from single-family residential RS1 to low-rise multifamily residential REM2, providing for severability and providing a penalty. Senior Planner, Jeff Hines. And before you start, Jeff, Don, is there anything on this agenda that you see that you would like to move forward for discussion before you will be grandpa?
I think it's fine.
Jeff, you have the floor.
Thank you. We're gonna see how much I like talking about zoning, apparently. No, just to be...I'll make this brief. We talked about this a few meetings ago. I know, I mean, I can get into more background if you want, but I know there's a lot of folks here from the public that want to, you know, that probably have some comment in this. If there's any questions from council, I'll take those. Otherwise, the presentation should be the same as before. Just to cover the notifications, I will say we'd sent five for this particular request. We got one back in favor, and we received several petitions that were included in the background packet. I think they totaled about 110 or so people with letters and various petitions that were opposed to this particular request. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those, though.
Charlotte, I believe this is in your area, so would you like to take this one, ma'am?
It is in mine, and I drove it as recent as about 9:00 last night to look at traffic, observe, and watch traffic. You know, I'm all for growth and improvement and development, but if you look at that particular area, a large portion of the development that is going on in San Angelo is right there. A lot of the new home construction, residential construction is happening right there. There are, as late as last night, there are two structures being framed, and another foundation has been poured on a street that's not even completely finished yet. That's how rapid the construction is going on. If you look closely at the road situation, all of the new homes that are out there, and if you look at that map, everything dumps right back onto Southland. A fact that I wasn't aware of until about three, four weeks ago, when I went out to drive it, and people were jogging and walking and stopping and visiting, that's their only way out of the subdivision, is to go to Southland. Because of the traffic on Southland, all the way from Southwest Boulevard to Sherwood Way, they are having trouble getting out on the street, you know, just simply to go to work. You put school time, arriving at school in there, and picking up at school. All of your little feeder streets out there that start with Southern Oak and go all the way around, and they all dump, all the traffic dumps on these smaller streets because there's no other place to dump. other place to go. Changing the residential, I've thought about this long and hard, and I was unable to find another school district in the city of San Angelo where it's not residential around the school district.
Correct. You'd be correct in that. I can't think of one either off the top of my head.
I cannot support or go along with changing this to add something that is totally different. The property does border. If you come out Green Meadow, if you look right there and right up there to the north, right there, it's got a strip center that's going in now. Some of the spaces, it's advertised that they're already leased, and that is going to create even more traffic for the Walmart and the Sam's and all of the business. And, you know, hallelujah, great. But also coming down that street are the heavy-duty trucks that are cutting across at Southland to get over to the Knickerbocker, the airport road, and they're using that access. It's not adequate for what we have now. I am looking for recommendations from planning to bring Twin Mountain all the way around to exit on Sherwood Way, which would be a ways down from this. But currently, right now, to change it adds more traffic, and I can't say that I can support it at this time without additional traffic outlets, and there's just not.
Yes, I'd tend to agree with you on that note. In terms of how the streets go into place, as people, as this area further develops and Twin Mountain and Appaloosa Trail eventually link to one another, that would provide perhaps the second linkage with, in the future, this may be a very viable proposal, but I would...
But not at this time.
Yeah, the traffic is a certain issue at this time.
You know, maybe it's the city's fault for not planning further ahead to bring Twin Mountain, as you can see the blue just a little bit there, to bring it and swing it on around. I don't know, but as that area develops, developers will be apt to pay for the development of that road around. And right now, I'm going to make the motion that we deny.
We have a motion that would deny the request. Do we have a second on this?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second that would deny. Go ahead, Winky.
I would like to ask Jeff a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, a couple of questions before you head out of city and state, county. How many, how many formal protests were filed against this zone change?
We had the two that are highlighted here that were in protest. The one, we should note. Number two mentioned that RM1 zoning would be his preference, but ultimately, the writer was still in opposition. He'd listed RM1 as a potential compromise. Then in terms of folks that are outside the 200 feet, we received approximately 110 letters.
All right, but didn't you, didn't you receive a formal protest letter from Mr. Jeff Bright?
Yes, we did, and that's property owner number four representing SAISD.
Yes, and it's he, the Assistant Superintendent of the San Angelo Independent School District. And he felt like this was a bad idea.
Yes.
Are you also aware that the playground for that elementary school is right across from this property?
Yes, sir.
Have you observed that it's not completely fenced in?
Yes.
That's true, is it not?
I believe so, yes.
The kids, so the kids can go directly from the playgrounds, they're right on the street, out into the street, and are not prohibited from doing that by the fence that's there.
Correct.
All right. And did the city planning department take any look at the problems with spot zoning in this case?
We took a look at it. There's other higher-density residential zoning in this area. We didn't find it to be that inconsistent. It'd be a good buffer zone from the commercial into the neighborhood. The timing might be some of, you know, some of the problems with it, but we did take a look at the spot zoning and found that it wouldn't be an issue.
Are you familiar with the case of the city of Texarkana?
Yes.
And what were the facts of that case?
That was one where if you've got a, if you're simply not property essentially different than other properties nearby for different treatment, it would be considered spot zoning. That being said, if one of the neighbors would have applied for this over in this area, I don't think we would have come up with anything different, to be honest.
Well, the facts to me, as a lawyer, look identical, Jeff. The facts in that case were that somebody with a residentially, single-family zone tract, about a little under six acres, was requesting a zone change to build an 80 to 90-unit apartment complex, which is fairly similar to what we have here, wouldn't you admit?
Yeah, we have other RS3 and RS2 zoning in this area as well that permits higher densities.
I understand, but most of those lots around there are either zero-lot lines, townhouses, or single-family residential, are they not?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I just think, I just think your interpretation of this case is wrong. It's identical in the facts. And in this case, let me just read some language for the council, and this is quoting the Texas Supreme Court, and it's also quoting the United States Supreme Court, talking about putting, installing a apartment complex next to a bunch of single-family residences. "The adverse impact upon the lands neighboring the Lucas Track would be substantial. A single-family residential neighborhood can be destroyed by the coming of an apartment house. The increase in density of people, automobiles, and the accompanying traffic and noise detract from the neighborhood until the area's desirability as a place of residence is destroyed."
Also keep in mind, too, with RM1 zoning, there's multiple structures allowed in there. Single-family townhomes and other developments are allowed in RM1 as well, which is part of our recommendation for that. They wouldn't necessarily have to be building apartments. That's just one of the choices they get in RM1 zoning.
Well, I understand, but Mr. Hewling has declared his desire to build an apartment complex, has he not?
Correct, and he could sell it tomorrow to somebody, and they could decide they're gonna build townhomes as well with it. So we're not guaranteed until we've got a set of plans yet, and we haven't gotten those yet.
Well, that's not a defense on the city of Texarkana case at all. In fact, his original request was for RM2, was it not, for a three-story apartment complex?
Correct, and staff had recommended RM1 instead, as we feel it would be much better for the neighborhood, given the multitude of choices that could be built there.
Right. I don't think we have any further questions.
Do y'all want to hear public comment? Do you want to continue to talk on council?
Yeah, can I say?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Rodney.
Good job, Jeff, actually. The one thing I just want to bring up on this, and I don't know how the vote's gonna go on this, but I do know that if we would have, if the owner of this property would have backed down to the RM1 the last time, this would have passed. We had the votes to do it, RM1, the last time. And I believe even Charlotte was gonna vote RM1 the last time. You were fighting for this, Charlotte. Actually, you wanted RM2, and I was trying to talk you off of that. We can go back to that, but you were totally in favor of that, and I guess the petitions of what's changed that. I can understand, people change, and you investigated more, and you found out something on this. I, the stat, I am for the staff's recommendation of going to RM1. The property owner that's adjoining it is Rocky Templin, that's building the houses that are going there. And he said, as long as it wasn't RM2, that he would be happy with the RM1 status. So I'm going with the property owner that's going to build the future houses that are gonna be in that area. So I kind of feel like if he doesn't think it's gonna threaten him, then it shouldn't really threaten the other people that are out there. I don't like that it's across the street from the school. That does bother me, but I do think you did bring up a good defense. Greg could sell this property tomorrow to someone else that's gonna come in there. So it's kind of his right, anything within that RM1. I think RM1 is a good fit over there. We'll just see how it goes.
Thank you.
Johnny?
Jeff, my only question is, the folks that signed this petition, I mean, the 110, whatever it was, did they realize that they had changed to RM1? Or did they sign because it was an RM2?
Yeah, we hadn't received the petition until after the first reading at the city council.
So everybody knows that it's, they're wanting to do an RM1? Okay. I didn't know whether they had signed it before or not.
Ma'am?
What is the difference between, I mean, it's, if we were to approve this, Greg Hewling or whoever he sells to, we, by law, they have to, they can build apartment complexes if they want to with an RM2 zoning?
RM1, they could build apartments. They could build a single-family house with an accessory apartment. They could build townhomes. They could build zero-lot line there if they wanted to.
They could.
Strip center?
No strip center.
No strip.
They could do a conditional use through the planning commission and get a daycare at that establishment. Mr. Hewling has brought that up to staff. When he, you know, when tabled that, he came in to meet with us to see if this would still work for him. He'd mentioned a daycare center might work there. RM1 would also allow with a conditional use of self-service warehouse there as well that would be approved through planning commission.
And I guess that's the only problem I have, is everybody would be okay with RS1, the residential type setting there, but once you go to the RM1, then if it opens up...
It opens up all those things I've mentioned.
That's where I'm kind of, I'm on the fence, because I hear democracy speaking. I see it. I see 110, whatever signatures are saying, please don't congest us even more, because I see the congestion that's happening as we speak, and we haven't even seen what's coming, is what I understand. So I'm kind of leaning towards going with, you know, the masses out there, so. I just wanted clarity that if we change it, he's able to put in a apartment complex, and that's where my problem is. And I think that's, everybody else feels that way.
Marty? Don?
Do we have any, any plans on widening the roadway there? Because I know, like Charlotte was talking about, it's congested as is.
It's on our thoroughfare plan. It's a major thoroughfare which requires 60 feet of right-of-way and 50 feet of pavement. It's about that right now, so unless there's a reclassification of that to an arterial street designation, that's certainly something you could direct staff to do, is to take a look at the thoroughfare plan and see if this maybe needs to be changed to an arterial street of some kind.
I think we definitely need to do that, because like Charlotte was saying, those trucks are cutting through there, and, you know, with the school and the fire station, Walmart, and all the Sam's that we have right in that area, I think it'd be a good plan for us to look at it.
Don, did you say there are trucks cutting through there? Are we having trucks cutting through there?
Oh, yeah.
Have we got a, have we got a law enforcement issue that we need to follow up on? There are certain roads that...
They're as busy as they can be, but it, there's, it's just massive.
Maybe we can follow up with PD on that and make sure that we don't have trucks on roads that should be...
Or a sign issue.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Just let me, let me make mine, then, Charlotte. Go ahead. This truck issue is a problem all over town, though. That's not just in this area. We've got them out on the north end of town that's cutting around from 87 to 2105. These truck, this truck issue is, every citizen in the city could make the same statement about their neighborhood. So, you know, the trucks are here, and I don't have, there's nothing we can do about that, but trucks are everywhere, and they're all looking for shortcuts. Charlotte?
Well, I just, I want to add that, yes, I was looking at developing commercial, and it's, commercial's got to stop somewhere. And I do agree with a lot of the people that I've talked to, that it needs to stop there at Green Meadow. The traffic down Green Meadow, the traffic speed that was averaged a few years before I got the speed bumps put in, you know, 69 and a half miles an hour is a straight shot until they hit the curb. A lot of people miss the curb, but the traffic out there is free and speedy. But the fence across from the playgrounds, the school has put in some really nice playground equipment. It's not just school hours. You have got soccer kids that practice there in the afternoon, you know, people that take their kids over for lack of being close to a city park with equipment. They use that area. And what Mr. Wardlaw pointed out is right. The fence is not continuous. It's one of those that you can walk around. You add more people in an apartment complex, you know, with smaller children running right across that road, there's nothing to stop somebody getting hit. The traffic count for single-family residents adds to a burden that's already there. And the people that have bought their homes and developed that area, and I'm one of them, you know, traded in my bigger home for a patio home. There's nothing wrong with it, but there are a lot of retirees who have done just that. They have placed their investment in their retirement homes. And all over the city, you don't have an apartment complex directly across the street from a school, adding to the school traffic that's already there. You just don't. And it graduates from the patio, the single-family, to the larger square footages, and that's what's going on out there. That's what Mr. Templin is building, you know, the larger square footages as it graduates out. That's customary, and that's normal, and that's your buffer zone in your areas, and that's why I'm dead-set against it, is devaluing the property values that these people have invested. Most of them have lived in other parts of San Angelo here, and they chose this to retire to scale down. And this would hurt their property values. You know, I've worked in apartment complexes and the neighborhoods. It's, it's a fight, a constant fight. And I have paid attention to the petitions and the phone calls and the emails that I have gotten, and the people don't want it.
Mr. Phillips?
Just one last question, and it's for either you or AJ. What is the difference between, how many homes would fit in that tract of land versus how many townhouses versus how many apartment complexes could you fit in there? I'm trying to get a traffic count. Maybe, maybe, maybe we're saying that each home has one vehicle, okay? How many houses could you fit in there?
It really depends how you subdivide it. If you develop it as single-family, you can do lots that are 50 by 100, so it's a, you know, six-acre site, whatever, six acres times 43, 560 is divided by 5,000 will give you how many single-family residences you could possibly put back there. The townhomes and zero-lot lines require slightly smaller lots. Townhomes, I think, are 25 by 100 or so, so that they get smaller. As you increase in density, you can get more in there, but with the apartments, it's limited to 35 units an acre, so whatever, if he's got about a six-acre site, whatever 6 times 35 is, that's what could go there.
Okay, that gets me a better idea. Thank you.
Winky?
Yes, I have a few comments, just in general, Jeff. Don't, no, it'll be addressed to you. In the real estate industry, what is attempted to be happening here is referred to as down zoning. And what that means is you're going from a less intensive use, i.e. single-family residences, to a commercial or more intensive use. And down zoning is a bad concept. We use it a lot here in San Angelo. We also use special-use permits, which are bad concepts, because it destroys or damages the property value of people who have bought in residential, single-family neighborhoods, expecting everything in that's zoned that way to remain that way. And when you do this down zoning, it's just a bad precedent that's set, and it, eventually a town can get the reputation of doing this, and developers will back off or be more hesitant, and that's not something we want. Folks, this is, this is a clear case, in my opinion, as an attorney of spot zoning, which is illegal under Texas law. The city of San Angelo has historically been using the special-use permit and other means to spot zone all over the city, and nobody's called their hand, other than me and a few others, and haven't filed suit, we have to go down and beat them every time. They have traditionally tried to spot zone over in Santa Rita for the last 20 years, time after time after time. Santa Rita is a residential neighborhood, it's been there 100 years, and people go down and try to place a commercial business right in the middle of Santa Rita, and the city planning commission has historically approved every one of those requests for a commercial business to be inserted in a residential neighborhood. And we've had to go down for the last 15 or 20 years and fight every one of them through the city planning commission and the city planning department and get them defeated. And I think now is the time to draw the line. And one other thing I want to point out is this, this council in recent meetings has acceded to the wishes of the residential neighbors where all of these zone request changes have been made. Some of them up in Lakeview, on Armstrong Street, as I recall, and the neighbors have come up and said they don't want any commercial development in the residential neighborhoods. And the council has unanimously acceded to their wishes and prevented for, prevented commercial development to go in residential neighborhoods, and this is a case that needs to follow that precedent.
And I just thought of an example of an apartment building around a school, and that's on Wilson Street, right there behind, I believe it's Fannin on Glenna. And that almost abuts the school, and there's not a faster street in this city than Glenna, and it's two lanes both ways. It's fast, and the people don't like that either. But there are two apartment buildings that I can think of right there in that area on... But there are two apartment buildings that I can think of right there in that area on Wilson and Lakeside, Lakeside and Howard. So, this is not a unique situation. These, these, these things exist in other parts of town. Traffic is a problem all over this city and I, I personally don't think that that's an excuse. And as far as putting an apartment close to a school, this is not the only one. And I'm trying to think, but on Bell Street, right in there by Holloman, there's a, there's an apartment building there that's not far from the school, so. Anybody else care to speak before we bring forth public? Because I have an idea there's going to be some, there's probably going to be some public comment, am I correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we hear from Greg Hewling first to see if he's willing to stray away from the apartment complex idea? That would change my mind, but...
I suppose Greg's going to be on the pro side, so let's start with the pro side and then we'll go to the con side. Greg, state your name, you've got three to five, please, sir.
Good morning, I'm Greg Hewling, owner of the property that's in question. And originally, when I visited with the city planning, they said that it fit their vision plan and there should be no problem getting this approved. Then I took it to the Planning Commission and they approved the RM2 with a vote of either four to two or five to two. I understand the neighbors' concern about apartments. I personally feel like that the RM1 with the two-story apartment would be a good buffer to, to, to their neighborhood. Their neighborhood right now is adjacent to RM2 right here and also Commercial General right here. And my property is right here. And in a compromise, I've asked for the RM1 and I feel like that that's a reasonable request. I can build apartments, townhouses, zero lot lines, homes and either two-family or one-family. And I understand Winkie's concerned about spotzoning, but my property is already adjacent to CG and RM2. And I feel like that the RM1 is a reasonable request. Thank you.
Could I ask for clarification? It's adjacent to?
Yes, ma'am.
What commercial?
It is adjacent to the CG that is owned by Sams.
Okay, that, yeah, but that area is the wash area, the...
It is located behind Sams, but all the area is owned CG.
That's the Arroyo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any more pros who wish to speak to this? Good morning, Terry.
Good morning.
State your name, you've got three to five, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Terry Jackson and I sit on the, on the Planning Commission. We did vote for this as RM2 and I still feel like if, as RM1, I do think it's a good use of the land. As Mr. Morrison stated, we do have a lot of traffic on that street, however, the traffic's there whether that apartment goes in or not. So, you also have all those other houses that are being developed back behind in this area, so that will be more traffic coming in. So, anyway, I don't think traffic's an issue, I do think it's a good utilization of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have any more pros? Okay, let's start on the cons then. And I will ask you to limit, limit three to five minutes and, you know, don't say the same things over and over again, if you would, please. Start with you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And you know, you know the rule, but now just state your name, you have three to five, sir.
Thank you. My name is John Moore and I'm one of those retirees who moved from another part of San Angelo into this district. I live on Oak Grove Boulevard. My concerns, and they're addressed in a number of things that the council members have said today, talking about widening Southland doesn't make sense. There's a house that is today under reconstruction because a car hit it at the corner of Oak Grove and Southland. Something that hasn't been mentioned to this point is the fact that it, the proposed property is across from Fire Station 2. And that also would limit access for Fire Station and emergency service personnel. I just, we've been in San Angelo since 95, I love this community and I would hate to see this property approved because it would have an impact on our property value, it would have an impact on our quality of life. And I just ask the council members to please oppose the, anything above RS1 for this particular property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Who's next?
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Tamara Stone and first I would just like to thank all of you for your hard work and especially Charlotte Farmer in my district, I appreciate. I've learned a great deal since you've been on the council, you ask lots of questions, I watch Channel 17. In fact, that's how I found out about this, by watching. So, the one that would have been opposed before wasn't kind of fair because we didn't all really even have a clue what was going on. Another thing I'd like to say is, I really would like to talk to Rodney Fleming here and I appreciate, well, I, I was watching about the water sacrifices, we all need to sacrifice, don't we Rodney? Yes, well, I think bringing in all these apartments with all this extra water uses is a big sacrifice we need to make. I don't really think we need that many more residents in this area and really, that's not even the biggest thing. The fact is, for me, I see young little, elementary still, elementary children, they are walking home. I watch that, it's already so busy. Do we have to really wait until some tragedies happen before we really, I mean, this is a community. I was raised in San Angelo, I left San Angelo, I've just recently moved back. San Angelo was a good community where people stood up and took care of each other. I really think we need to look at things besides money. These communities, I know we're bringing things in, but what is it that makes San Angelo? San Angelo is surprising because of the community and not just because of money. And you bring in a lot of transient people, which that's what we'll be doing, I understand we need that, the economy, but it's going to change everything. And once you let that horse out of the barn, you can't put it back in. Really, I, I just really hope everybody really thinks about this. It's an important thing. San Angelo is a really awesome community. It's not like anywhere else. There are people up north, the economy is really hard. This, this is a town we could really all stand behind and be proud of, but we have to take it a little bit slower and think about everything we're doing instead of pushing things in. You know, and I know you have children, so really, adding more traffic isn't going to make things easier. I mean, we're going to have to deal with that already, what we have coming, so why do we want to add more? We're already going to make this difficult with our kids. And I really, really believe, more than anything, and I don't even have children, but I do watch these kids and I feel as adults, we have to take the authority to be adults and look out for our kids. That really is our most important thing. And being across from Fire Department, are we going to have to worry about the fact that emergency calls? I mean, is there lawsuits now because we're going to have so many calls, are people aren't going to be able to get through? I mean, does the city, is it liable? I mean, are these things have been thought about? There are a lot of things to think about. But I, I understand that, that we need places, but this really is already built up, I just really don't see that we have space for this, to bring in more apartments and, and move this and change this. I do understand that it's a hard time and y'all have hard decisions and I watch y'all and I really do appreciate the hard work you put into it, I do. So, I do thank you and I appreciate everything, but I really do hope that you want to sacrifice some, Rodney. Really, think about that. We need sacrifice, which means I hope you're going to think about before we make a decision like this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Dwayne?
Yes?
Can I respond to that?
Yes, sir.
One thing, when I say sacrifice, I'm talking about water issues, that's the most. And when we have, one, when we start talking about apartment complexes, we need to get over the thing of, San Angelo needs apartment complex. We will have to have apartment complexes to, and people that live in apartment complexes are not bad people. And we don't need to put all apartment complexes on the north side of town, on the east side of town. They need to be spread out all over town. I'm a real estate person and I understand that you need apartment complexes in all areas of town. That's why I'm for this. You're going to get the housing over there. If he doesn't do the apartment complex, you're going to get probably patio homes over there and you're still going to get the same, probably not quite as much traffic. You won't, and I agree with that, you won't, but you are going to have the traffic over there and it is going to get much worse because there's a way more residential property. Yes, ma'am, it will get much worse than it is right now. You have a lot of residential property over there where there are more houses going to be built. We have to have apartment complexes throughout this whole city. And when we talk about, she, she made a reference of bad, bad people and we, when she's saying that with apartment complexes, that's, I just don't agree with that at all. We just, people that live in apartment complexes are people that, that's just what they choose. They either can't afford a house or it's, maybe they're not going to stay in place a long period of time or something like that. So, we need apartment complexes throughout the whole city. I do think we need to sacrifice and we're going to get to that here in just a little bit.
Thank you, Rodney. Who's next? State your name and I'm keeping my eye on the clock this time.
Oh, you would at this point, sure. Good morning, I'm Linda Silva. I've been a longtime, over 30-year resident of San Angelo. I've been a elementary school principal here in San Angelo, owned a business here in San Angelo. My child grew up here and went to school at Bonham Elementary School. I'm still employed in San Angelo. So, I have a heart for it because we've been here so long. I do have a heart for my neighborhood also. I wanted to give you a personal bird's eye view. Every day I walk, I've had a habit of doing this for years and years, I walk up and down Southland from my house on Laurel Oak all the way past the bottom parking lot where the staff parks, where the children play and back. On more, on more days than I can tell you, I just began to count cars. So, between 36 and 40 cars are going past just as I cross the front of the school. Now, that's not my whole walk, but that's just the front of the school. So, I'm not going to dwell on traffic because we've talked about this too much. I want to ask you, who benefits from this? Who, who, who really are the people who are going to benefit from changing the zoning of this property? I can tell you who it's not going to benefit, but you know who it's going to benefit. So, the negative effects of this, if you've ever been or around or lived in an apartment complex, I'd, I'd like, sure, we need apartment complexes, we wouldn't argue about that. I'd like for you to drive though down Rock Brook and look at those apartment complexes. I go from my house to take the shortcut to my church where I work and as I see mattresses and recliners and garbage that's overflowing the dumpsters and that's what I see when I drive past the apartment complexes. I also have observed, because I pass there during the day and often in the night, and I see cars that are not, that do not belong to residents parked there. Cars that show up, my daughter has lived in multiple apartment complexes. Cars just begin to show up because friends of friends and so forth and a lot of times they are parked overnight and sometimes for longer periods of time. The traffic there, again, of course, it increases. Water usage, we've talked about all that. I want to talk a little bit about the school business. Schools adjust, you know, wherever you put something, schools are going to adjust. They're going to fill out enrollment papers, they're going to check kids in and out of school, they're going to eventually move barracks in to house the kids at the school. So, permanent structures, now we've got barracks that are moved in. The school where, that I was principal of, we had 16 barracks because we had not enough permanent structures in the school. So, all of this is going to increase. The kids are going to come with, with or without school supplies. Thank goodness for charity organizations in our town who take care of that kind of thing. We bought property in this area because we like the area, we enjoy walking there, safety's a concern, but the main thing, it's our quality of life. And I would ask you, does this move enhance our quality of life? It does not for the people who live where I live and walk every day. We have pride in our property, we try to keep our property up and it's important to our neighborhood. We value our ownership of our property.
You have one minute.
I ask you to stop this rezoning of this property and consider the, the property value rights of the people who are living there and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next?
My name is Jack Brandt and I, my wife and I moved to San Angelo 13 years ago and San Angelo has been a wonderful place to live. While we've been here, we have, we have also downsized. When we first came to San Angelo, we built a nice big house with a big green yard and a swimming pool and that type of thing. And it didn't take us too awful long to realize what the trend was. So, we have downsized, we live within a stone's throw now of Bonham School and we get an opportunity to see the kids coming and going from school, which we enjoy. You know, as a former, a former educator, I, I enjoy kids or I wouldn't have been in the, in the business for 30 years. I really have some reservations about apartments coming in close to us naturally because of the devaluing of our property. I don't know, I, I think most people, probably their house is one of the biggest expenditures they'll ever make in their lifetime and, and they try to make a good choice. And we tried to make a good choice, we picked a neighborhood that was zoned, single residential housing and we put our money there and being across from the school was an additional benefit of being there. We also noted that all the property around there in close proximity was all zoned the same way. And I feel very strongly and no disrespect to the planning, zoning committee, no, planning committee, that I think that was a mistake, I, I really do. They need to, they need to rethink because of the large number of homes around there with people like my wife and I that have invested our money in that. It's, it's just, I feel betrayed. I guess that's probably the best word that I can come up with is betrayed. And I wanted to address also, Mr. Mayor, a comment that you made concerning several places in San Angelo that have high-traffic areas and apartment houses, that type of thing. And that is true, but I was, when I was growing up, I, I was always taught that, that two wrongs don't make a right and three wrongs don't make a right. So, if you see something that's wrong, you need to fix it, you don't need to go along with it. And, but I still think that the major consideration should be the children. I'd like to relate just a little thing that happened to me yesterday. I was on Southland and it was about time school had gotten out and here comes this little young man, he wasn't very tall, he had a big old knapsack on his back and I'm sure that that thing probably weighed just about as much as he did. He had to lean forward as he walked in order to stand up. And he was trying to negotiate across Southland and the traffic there is pretty heavy as we've been documented at this point in time. And I'm thinking, boy, what can we do to help this young man? Well, let's build us an apartment house and let's put a whole bunch more congestion in there. And what are we going with all those cars that come in with those apartments? Well, why don't we stack those on top of each other like we're doing the families that we're bringing in and putting them in those apartment houses?
One minute, sir.
I think everybody knows how I feel about the situation and most everybody that I'm with and I just hope that you people will do the right thing, I'm sure that you will. Like I say, we love San Angelo, not really interested in leaving at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You want now? Charlotte?
Oh, there, Mr. Curry, go, come on up, I'll, I'll wait till you're finished.
I've got a little different perspective on this. My name is Jeff Curry and I own Performance Properties. I've been in the real estate investment company, or been in the real estate business for 25 years and that time I would define San Angelo market as having moderate, common sense growth. But what we are seeing right now is out of control and makes no sense. In the last 25 years, we've built five multifamily properties for a total of 732 units. Our current multifamily market consists of 6,000 total units. Our current occupancy is 95%, leaving approximately 300 current vacant units right now. vacant units right now. Okay? Including the Boulevard, which is the new property going out on the Merchant Highway, that's two hundred units. They have plans to build another two hundred units. There's a property being built right now in Bentonwood that's two hundred units. There's a property planned to go behind Jim Bass Ford, which is another two hundred units. And that property also could expand to a thousand units. So we're talking about eight-hundred-plus units being added to the market in the span of two years. So, we're adding more units in two years than we added the last twenty-five years. Okay? So, if those properties that are in the process of being built were open, we'd have nine hundred vacant units right now. I don't know if you, let me gather my thoughts. We have a similar situation in the hotel business. I don't know if you've noticed, but they're building a hotel on just about every corner right now. We've got two thousand rooms right now, and by the time it's all said and done, we'll have about three thousand units. You know, a year ago, we were all up in arms about the RV parks, you know, how we wanted, you know, we needed all these new things for the new people that were coming, and all of a sudden, if we didn't do that, or if we had done it, we'd have half dozen vacant RV parks. So, my point, I guess, hit a long round about Wade, my point is that if you have a property owner who comes to you with a request to change the zoning on their property, I believe it is the job of the planning department, along with the planning commission, and you, the city council, to research the needs of the city, along with the wishes of the neighborhood, to determine that the zone change request is in the best interest of both. And the obvious answer in this situation is it is not in the best interest of either. So that's it in a nutshell. So I'm passionate about this, 'cause I've been here a long time, and I hate to see what's going on. I think we're going a little too fast, and I don't wanna end up with a bunch of vacant properties in San Angelo. And so I think you really need to think about what's going on. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just for clarification, to end up here on this discussion, my statement about apartment community across the street from, directly across the street from a school. I want to point out that this particular property was zoned, single-family, before Mr. Euling purchased it, and that's what it is now. The lady mentioned Rock Brook Drive, and that's immediate access to the loop right there, and it was zoned for apartment living when the subdivision was developed. It was zoned for that. They, I lived, before I moved to where I am now, I lived very close to, within a half-block of one of Mr. Curry's properties, and I knew that when I purchased my home, that next-door or across the street, a half-block down, there was that area. So that was my choice. But the people that are here now where this is, they purchased their property knowing that it was RS1, and they had some comfort in that zoning. And that's why they purchased. So you can't say that they didn't know where, it's like this there, there, over here it's like this. Those areas were built according to the zoning and didn't require a zone change. That's how this one is different. Thank you.
Any further comments? Anybody help, anybody have anything to say that hasn't been said? Only thing I will say, just as a closing comment, is that I love San Angelo, and I've lived, I hadn't lived here my entire life yet, but I've lived here sixty-three years. And I love my community, and I want the best for my community. And when I bought my property, I bought it the way it was, but I've got three trailer parks right by me now, and there's apartment buildings all over this town. And every one of y'all, the common denominator is, we know we need apartments, but don't put them in my neighborhood. And everyone in this city says the same thing. Don't put it in my neighborhood. So, I don't know, I understand the traffic, but that's a problem all over town, I understand the water, but that's a problem all over town. And every, all one-hundred-thousand citizens in this city could say, build them, just don't put it in my neighborhood. So I don't feel that that's a very good excuse, and that's just personally me speaking, because these apartment buildings need to be all over town and not just situated in one particular area. So, any other comment from council? Johnny?
I've got one last question, and I know it's been brought up a couple of times, but, and Rodney, maybe you can help me out on this since you're, you deal with realty, but, and I hear you folks, and I think I'm leaning in your direction, but I wanna educate myself. When you talk about whether you build, really, what's talked about, if you build an apartment complex or a multi-purpose, I mean, multi-homes there, how does it devalue other properties? I don't understand. If you build a nice fancy two-story apartment complex, how does it devalue the property around? I'm trying to, just to learn and educate myself. How does that happen? Anybody?
On Gray Meadows, there's a huge apartment complex that's across the street from those patio homes over there, and I sell those patio homes, I've sold probably ten in the last ten years, on that street across from that apartment complex. So they, it didn't devalue those, because when we do a CMA, a comparative market analysis, on those houses on that street, as opposed to a house over, like, a couple blocks over that are away from the apartment complex, it's not gonna affect it near as much as what they're saying. I see their point, and I, you know, I could go almost either way on this also, but I think that we need apartment complexes throughout the whole city. And Mr. Curry's comment as far as overbuilding, I think that's up to the individual investor. If they wanna invest their money and take the risk, I say let them take the risk on it. He has a bunch of apartment complexes or investment properties also, so I could see the point of him, and also Winky, not wanting to know apartments coming in here, because they do own apartment complexes. So that's, that's something that I could be looking at also. I think that if, if he wants to do apartment complexes, I'm for that. I don't think it's gonna devalue it near what they're saying.
Any further comment from the council?
Yeah, I'd like to address Johnny's question. Johnny, I am in the apartment business, I am not hostile to apartments, but I've been in the apartment business for a long time, and I've owned them all over San Angelo. The difference between a homeowner and an apartment dweller is, not that they're, that they're not both decent people, but an apartment dweller is by nature somewhat transient, because he's renting an apartment on a temporary basis. In San Angelo, the rentals are six months, and so you can rent an apartment for six months, and then you're gone, and you do not have any investment in that property, you're just living there. And so, I screen the people that live in my apartment complex very closely. Not all apartment owners or managers do that. And if you don't screen your apartments properly, then you're gonna get a bunch of riffraff in there, and, you know, people that might have either felony conviction, or like, one time I had a person that came in, wanted to move into an apartment with his estranged wife, and turned out he was a sex offender. And I ran a criminal background check on him and found out that he was, otherwise he'd have been living there. So, there is a difference, and it depends on how the apartments are managed and run, and Charlotte can tell you, because she hired me, we have kicked certain apartment complexes out of the San Angelo Apartment Association for running flop houses and drug, opium dens and all kinds of stuff, mistreating apartment tenants, and so there's just a lot of bad apples in the business, and so you never know what you're gonna get.
Yeah, but Winky, in the same point, you are running a credit check, and someone that has a criminal background can go and buy a house without having any background done on their, whether they're a criminal, they've done drugs or anything like that. I mean, I would have the argument of that, because I, my wife takes care of houses, rentals, apartments, and she does more of a credit check on them than they do when they buy a house. So we can, you can have someone that's gonna be just as bad or worse in a house, because a house, especially with the meth that we're having right now, they're not gonna do it in an apartment complex and manufacture it in an apartment complex, because they've got a neighbor next door that can smell what they're doing. They'll do it in a house, it's separated. So I, I don't think that's a valid argument.
Boy, I couldn't disagree with you more. I've been in the apartment business for thirty-five years, Rodney. I've been the president of San Angelo Apartment Association two times. I'm an attorney, and, you know, that...
You're saying that people living in apartments for six months are just as trustworthy and upstanding as the people out here that have bought two-hundred-thousand-dollar, one-hundred-fifty thousand-dollar houses?
This is getting a little off.
I'm saying the majority of them are.
This is getting a little off task, I think it's time to stop this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address one of your comments about communities right quick. There are seven apartment communities in my area, in my neighborhood, so they're not being just built in the north part of town. We have seven. And I agree with Mr. Curry, I respect his numbers, and if you're lucky enough to live in one of his properties, there's just not any problems. He runs a clean, tight ship. But unfortunately, San Angelo has a lot of absentee owners, companies from California that buy these properties, and they don't, I take that back, I have eight apartment communities in my area, just thought of another one, but most of them are very, seven of them are really well-run. But the fact remains, they were built according to the zoning that the planning was set by the city to begin with. This is a change for what was already invested and done, and that's what makes this different.
I think it's time to take a vote. Any other public comment? If not, I'm gonna cut the comment off, and we're going to vote on this. Okay, the motion has been made that we deny the RM1 rating on this property and leave it RS1. It has been seconded. All of those in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Show your hands. Okay. All in favor of allowing, say aye, say nay.
Nay.
So it's four-three, the motion has been denied. And at this time, let's call for about a ten-minute break. Your request, and I need to run this by the council, I would like to pull the water deal up for the school, since we've got about eight or ten people that's here, and let's get that taken care of. And then, we have public housing, that shouldn't take but just a moment, we'll get you next. And then, since we have the sheriff and the police department here, they're waiting for nineteen and twenty, I would like to pull that. So if we can get the school, and then we'll go back and hit fourteen, and then we'll go to nineteen and twenty, do I have any problem with council?
No, sir.
Everybody agree?
Number eighteen.
Eighteen. Okay with you? You okay with you, Charlotte?
That's fine.
All righty, well, let's start with number eighteen. School, you ready? Okay, this is consideration and possible action on the petition for variance under the Code of Ordinances, Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan, Section 11, 203E, to the allowable watering frequency and time of day for newly-planted landscapes, submitted by the San Angelo Independent School District, requested by SAISD, and presented by Water Director Ricky Dixon. And we did talk about this last meeting, we had a three-three vote on this, so we brought it back. Ms. Farmer was not with us, so how much depth do we wanna get into with this?
Did I come back to life? Did I come back to life?
You are back to life.
Okay. I did watch the council meeting on television, too, it's fullest in its sync, and I'm ready to move forward if you guys are...
I got a couple of questions for our SAISD.
Go ahead, Rodney.
Who's gonna represent ASID? My buddy.
And you are a brave soul.
He's turning redder and redder as closer he gets.
He's got some help, he's got an assistant coming up to support you.
No, that's security.
Thanks.
He's that security.
First of all, I wanna make a statement that the Standard Times wrote an article that said, "I wanna sacrifice the baseball fields." That is the furthest thing. That's, if anybody knows me, really knows me, I'm like the biggest sports fan of all time. I don't care, I love sports more than I love anything. And sacrificing those fields is not something that I wanna do at all. My question to you is, did you overseed these fields last year and the year before, 2011, 2012?
Yes, sir.
When did you overseed?
About the same time. We probably would've done it a little bit earlier, but we do hire people to tell us on when to do it. And this year, the ground temperature for it to germinate was not right until actually last week. So, you know, it all depends, we look at the temperature of the ground, basically, is when we determine when we overseed.
Yes, sir. I guess that's the only things, the questions I had. You had talked about, you know, not doing the other water and doing that, I know we're not gonna go into that, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna go into that. I think we just need, probably have a vote up here, does anybody else have any?
Could I, I have one thing I'd like to say. There is good news as far as watering. Last night, our board did approve to take three large areas, an area at Central, an area at Lakeview, and what they call Old Bobcat, and we are gonna be putting turf in there, which will cut down our watering quite a bit. And all them, all them fields and practice for the band, soccer, there's a tremendous amount of use across the city on all them fields. So, last time I talked about some of the future plans we have, I mentioned that that was in the works. I'm very thankful that it got passed last night, and we're going to have at least three more areas that we won't be using water.
One thing that, I've got kinda the water usage for you guys over the last three years, and I have a feeling which way this vote is gonna go. I'm going to watch to make sure that that, that you cut that water down, I mean significantly. I'm serious about this.
We are, too. We are serious enough that, I will tell you, Mr. Silva's was talking about water bills. I have an individual that has been working under me for nine years, and we do take our bills very seriously, and computers make mistakes, and we found big mistakes, not just with water, but with electricity. We monitor, we monitor this monthly. I have to take it to the board, it is publicly posted on all our utilities. One of my biggest goals when I took over as a director, a big piece of my budget is utilities, and not just water. Electricity, gas, you know, we pay a tremendous amount of water for rainwater programs. We try to do everything we can to save on our utilities, and our records are open to the public. Our water use, if you look, I have nine years of history, you, if you look at it with our construction, with adding more area, our water has gone up a little bit, our usage. But if you take a look at what we're putting in around our campuses, again, you know, crushed granite, low-water-type vegetation, and Mr. Bryant is who I work for, and I assure you, he is very involved in our utilities and our landscaping.
My biggest concern, and I got a lot of public feedback on this, and actually, most of it was positive for me, I want to keep banging this drum on water conservation. I'm gonna bang it until people are just sick and tired of hearing from me. What most people don't realize is Wichita Falls, yesterday, went in the drought level four, which means no watering outside, none. No swimming pools, no water in your grass, no businesses, no nothing. Drought level four. Do you imagine what's gonna happen to their fields in Wichita Falls? Everything's gonna die, everything. And they need the water. And that's my biggest thing, I'm not against you, I don't have a beef with you whatsoever. My biggest thing is, I'm worried about our future. And that's, that's my main thing, is I'm worried about our future. So if you, if you come to me and I see these bills going down, boy, it'll make me feel, you told me you were gonna cut it, five million. You need a million here, you're gonna cut five million. I don't think you're gonna do it, but we're gonna see. I hope that you prove me wrong.
Well, if I prove you wrong, or you've proved me wrong, that is not my issue, and that is not why I'm... that is not why I'm standing here. I'm standing here for the safety of our children on them fields and the investment of taxpayers what I think is best. Now, if it comes to watering to survive or the fields, that's another stand for me. But at this point, I hope we never get there. But at this point, we're doing everything we can that that doesn't happen. But Jim Elson alone, or the school district, is not going to prevent that from happening all by theirself.
Well, the school district is one of the biggest users throughout the city. So, I mean, we really need... And what I would really like to see, and I see Ms. Bonds back in the back, I would really like to see the district formulate a plan. Wichita Falls had to do this in the last couple of years up there, where they were trying to make noticeable changes in their water usage by all the manufacturing and the largest users throughout the whole city. I would love to see the school district come forward and try to do a plan to cut all this watering. You told me... The mistake you made last time was you said you didn't need this five million. That's where I had the problem with. If you don't need it, you shouldn't be using it at all. And I don't want to get into an argument over that again. And I think I might be the only one speaking on this. I'd like to...
Marty. No, Marty and Charlotte. Marty, you go.
If I understand it right, the five million is consumption total.
That's correct. That's correct.
That's drinking, that's everything. I was under the impression last meeting that we were talking about using five million for irrigation, so I don't have near as big a problem with it this time.
And that's my fault, the way I wrote it, and you're absolutely right. It is not just irrigation, it's the usage of the whole building. That's the cafeteria, that's the restrooms, that's everything on the campus. Again, like I explained, all our irrigations are not on single meters. Now, part of my program, like he said, a future plan, there are about fourteen items that we're trying to accomplish. And one of them is putting independent, not city meters, but meters on all our irrigations. And that's one of my objectives to achieve. I haven't got there yet, but I am working on that. So there is a partial plan to save or calculate or answer where the water is going.
Well, I think Central, the landscaping at Central looks great, and I know it's very efficient as far as the park that goes along east-west, as far as water, because that's all water. Those plants need virtually no water, so thank you.
Charlotte?
I definitely see the value in your proposal and your request. It's not that we're putting grass or sports before the people. That's not what it is. I see the value in your request and what you're willing to give back to the city. And I do see that you do have a plan, because the outside, you know, going into Central from the cafeteria area all the way back to the gym has been... The grass has been taken out, and it's beautifully done in the landscape theme of concrete. It really is. And, of course, the crushed marble or whatever that you're putting around. So I do see that you have a plan. I'm going to move for the motion that we approve the petition for variance.
I second.
Don?
I also personally know everybody that's been up here talking, and I know when they tell you that they're going to do something, they're going to do it to the best of their ability, and I have confidence in that also. So that's why I seconded the motion.
And I just want to say in closing, we pumped the South Pool into the North Pool. We've now pumped the North Pool into Nazworthy, and now the South Pool is empty, the North Pool is empty. We have pumped the water from Fisher into Nazworthy. We have no water in the North Pool, the South Pool, or Fisher. And we're at about seventy percent on Nazworthy, Ricky. We're at about twelve to thirteen percent on Ivy. That means that in about fifteen months, my friends, we're going to be drinking dust if it doesn't rain. And I'm not against the school system, and I'm not against baseball fields, but I think it's... I'm with Rodney. I think it's time to stop this. We are in a desperate, dire situation. I think it's time that we realize that our entire city and the benefit and the health of our entire city is at stake here. Seventy percent of Nazworthy, because it's not going to take long to drain Nazworthy and the rivers, and Ivy's just about gone. So that's my say. Anybody else on the council want to speak to this?
I'll call for a vote.
Okay. I haven't asked for public comment, but I would like to have public comment, if there is any. Yes, sir. Bill?
Mayor Morrison, members of the board, members of City Council, my name's Bill Dindal. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of SAI SD. I want to thank you for this consideration, and I want to thank you, Rodney, for your comments last week. We are in a desperate situation, Mayor Morrison, Representative Fleming. We understand that, and that's the reason we are going ahead with these three artificial turf fields. If those... If we don't get those in soon, those programs will all be starting to shutter. These baseball programs, we are seriously going to look at our options in those fields. We have put in some zero-scape landscaping in all of our remodels. We have put in water-saving devices in all of our recent remodels in our schools, too, because we do understand that if there's no water, there won't be any schools either. So we certainly understand that. We certainly appreciate your input, Mr. Fleming. You personally inspired us to... We, as a Board of Trustees of SAI SD, are now looking into some rainwater capture options, some rainwater detention in places where we can do it and can afford it. And again, as we are putting artificial turf, we can afford it. In addition to that, that not only benefits the schools, but that benefits the communities where those turf fields go down. The turf field at Lakeview is going inside the track behind the school. So not only the football teams and any other... The band can practice out there, numerous soccer teams, baseball. There's activity there all the time, the same way at Central. At Central Campus, the soccer team practices there, the band practices there. We... In order to continue those programs, we need to have something for them to use, and that's our concern, too. Old Bobcat is used... Old Bobcat Stadium is used four or five days a week. And we realize that we can't maintain the grass surfaces there. We just can't. There's not enough water. So our alternative is to seek artificial turf or alter those programs. And so, same way with the baseball fields, we're going to look at some alternatives there, but we are looking seriously at rainwater capture, rainwater detention. At Lakeview, there are some old... At Lakeview Stadium, there are some old wells out there. We're trying to revive the possibility of using those for irrigation, even though it's underground water. It won't be city-provided, but again, if that's the case, we can at least maybe maintain enough to keep the field alive, not necessarily in plush condition, but just alive. And so, Mr. Fleming, I do thank you for your comments last week. They were actually inspiring to us, too, as a board, and we appreciate your consideration of this variance, too. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments, and I'm glad that you guys are doing that. And I really want the whole city to know that all big businesses should be doing what you're talking about, the rainwater capture system. I'm looking into that for my own personal residence, and I really would wish that a lot of people would do that throughout the whole city. It would help out tremendously.
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something real quick? And Jim, I appreciate what you're doing, too, and Dr. Bonds, and just the whole district in general. I like when I hear the idea of artificial turf on baseball fields, because your conservation efforts started way back at San Angelo Stadium when you installed the artificial turf there. It would just cost you way too much money to water and keep it green. So again, if... I like, that's music to my ears, that you guys are really going to tighten your belt, because I was just told this morning, hey, you know, we are. You know, trees are dying everywhere, and we're not going to have water. But again, I think the youth are the future of our community, and I'm okay with it.
We've got a motion that we approve the variance to allow them to water. Charlotte made the motion. Don has seconded it. Motion has been made and seconded. We have beat this horse to death. I think it's time to call for a vote. All of those in favor of allowing the variance, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold your hands up. Well, that's one, two, three, four, five. So I guess Rodney and I are going to be the two nays on this, so the variance has passed, and please be responsible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to thank the board.
Yes, sir.
Save that water.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
While we're moving to the next item, can I make a comment?
You may.
Thank you. I want to say that I recognize the value of the school system and the monies, the dollars, the economic impact that it brings to San Angelo, the conditions of our fields for other cities to come here. And we do... I do recognize that value and see that their efforts in conservation, if you look two weeks ago in the paper, eight million gallons a day on Sunday two weeks ago, and that's got to be an all-time record-low usage. And the first thought that came to my mind was Mr. Dane. With that little use, he doesn't have a whole lot of income to work with.
No, we're hurting on the income side, but we need to make the water last.
We'll be working on that in just a few more agenda items. Let's go and get number fourteen. This is the first public hearing, consideration of introducing an ordinance, increasing the number of members on the PHA, Public Housing Authority, from five to seven, other related provisions and ordinance, amending Chapter Two, entitled Administration, Article 2.2700, entitled Housing Authority, Section 2.2701, entitled Created Members Terms of the Code of Ordinances of the City of San Angelo by Increasing the Number of Members on the Housing Authority from five to seven, Providing that two members be tenants of public housing, Providing for Severability, Effective Date. City Clerk Alicia Ramirez, PHA Chairperson Tony Villarreal, who has left. So I turn it over to you, ma'am.
This is Becky Salandy. She's the Executive Director for the PHA Board. At our last meeting, we had questions as to why the increase in the membership, and Ms. Salandy's here to explain that.
Hi, thank you all.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Villarreal had to leave, so I'll try to speak on their behalf. The board came to the decision to raise it from five to seven, or would like to raise it from five to seven, in order to accommodate when there... Maybe a board member resigns or leaves, so that they can ensure that they always have a quorum. And also creates more of a diverse group for the board. We now have an educator and also someone with some experience in low-income housing. We have a banker, a CPA, and then we have two residents that both of them are on each of our programs, so it brings some input from both the public housing side and our Section Eight from the residents. All of our board members have a passion for what we do and a servant's heart. And so I think having seven of the seven commissioners just allows diversity, more input, and also ensures that we always have a quorum.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I watched the meeting in its entirety, and I apologize for not being here. I was on vacation. But I was on the PHA Board when I was elected to City Council, and I was on the Board whenever we reduced it from seven to five. And the reason we did, we had trouble meeting a quorum with the higher number. We had the problems of having the seven people to get together, and it made the percentages greater to have a quorum, and that's why we went to five. So that's what I know about it.
What is the percentages? What are they?
Well, I don't recall. I just...
Well, now, we have to have four to have a quorum.
Yeah.
And then when it goes to seven?
Seven, it was five.
Yeah. With seven, it's four, and with five, it's three. And so we did... I think what initially brought it is we had two commissioners resign, and so then, at that point, we were down to just having the three until we could get those fields. Sometimes it does take a little bit of time to find a resident commissioner. So Mr. Villarreal visited with the mayor to discuss possibly changing it to seven, so that if someone does resign a resident commissioner, we will have a quorum until we can replace that resident commissioner.
Any other further comment? Counsel?
I move that we approve this item as presented, increasing the number of members on the PHA Board from five to seven. That's my move.
Anybody want to second that move? Wow.
Second.
Got a motion, I got a second. Don?
You know, I just feel like we're not really helping them by doing that. You know, we have hard enough times and problems getting the people that we have, and I think, you know, like I stated last time, you know, in some of these, they're kind of redundant. This is not one of them, thank goodness, but I just... I don't think we're helping by increasing by two. You know, if it would... It looks to me like we would help them more by maybe not specifying exactly what those had to be and allowing them to be more diverse.
Those are HUD regulations that we have the two resident... If we go to seven, we have to have two. If we're at five, we have to have at least one resident commissioner, and HUD requires that we set it up that way so that the residents have input.
Do you continue?
We haven't had a problem with having the quorum up for...
That's my question.
I can't promise that that, you know, will always be, but we haven't had a problem with that so far.
I'd have a problem if we're creating another board, but this is existing one, and we're just trying to add fuel to their way of doing business, and that's why I'm okay with it. But we'll vote how we vote.
But you're saying we're not having a problem with the quorum?
No, we're not now having a problem having four show up. And it's mainly just the board wanting to do this so that when a resident resigns and we are without a resident, we still have a quorum until we can refill that position, because sometimes it takes a little bit to get a resident commissioner, not always. And also, it just brings more people to the table, like more of a diverse group, more input.
When you do have a quorum, does it have to be two of the residents? Do they both have to be there, or only one of them?
No. As long as they're on the Board, there's no specification that they have to be at the meeting to make a quorum.
Do I have any public comment on this deal? If not, is there any more comment from the council? Then I guess it's time to make a vote. The motion has been made that we go from five members to seven members on the Public Housing Commission. It has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Look like we got four nays and we have three ayes. That means that you still have five.
Okay.
Okay. That one is soft. Thank you very much. Let's move on now to number nineteen. This will be our...
Fifteen.
Or we're not... It's fifteen.
Huh?
There's a fourteen, and then there's a fifteen.
We got fourteen.
Well, fifteen was... They wanted to make a presentation of the various activities that the PHA Board has been completing.
I believe we should have had that in this fourteen, and this one is fifteen. Well, since we've got you up here, Becky, let's go ahead and do number fifteen. Fifteen's an update and presentation of the Public Housing Authority-related matters. You have it, Ms. Salandy.
There was.
I'll take responsibility.
Comes under your chief.
That's right.
Here it is. Becky. Our board wanted us to just kind of present what's going on at the Housing Authority, what we... And some of our future plans. It's our privilege to serve the families of San Angelo and some of the surrounding counties. It is our mission to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing to low and very low-income families through rental assistance. We have three main programs at the Housing Authority that we try to do that through. The first one would be public housing. Public housing was created under the Housing Act of 1937, and here in San Angelo, we have a hundred and seventy-four units. Sixty of these are located in two sites, and they are elderly-specific. Twenty-four of these are... They're called our incentive homes, and they're acquisition houses, and they're scattered throughout San Angelo. And then the remaining eighty-four are located in two family sites. These are federally funded, and then we also have tenant revenues, rental revenues. For the last year, we were hit by sequestration, and so we were funded at seventy-seven percent. We won't know our funding for the next calendar year until... They've just announced until February. Our calendar year is October 1 through 9/30, so these are for the last year. We did receive in federal funds three hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the public housing program. Under public housing, we also receive an annual grant, is a capital fund grant. These funds are provided by HUD, and they are for the development, financing, and modernization of public housing units only. That's the only thing that we can use these for. That's the only thing that we can use these for. Some of our past CFP projects have been the rehab of the scattered site, the incentive homes. And those homes are for families that are living in the development, that have good rental history and have had no problems. We use these as an incentive. They can move into these homes that are scattered throughout San Angelo, so they don't live in the developments. These are just some of the houses that we've done in 2009, 10, and 11, and some of the contracts. That particular house in the picture is on Rice Street. In 2010, we rehabbed Robin Hood and one on High Meadow. So as you can see, these houses are scattered throughout San Angelo. These are the last two that were done. This one is at Twin Oaks, and this one is on Old Post. And those were done with the 2011 CFP grant. So going forward, we are trying to change our annual and our five-year plan to kind of steer away from expending so much on the acquisition homes and put more money back into our development properties. We only have five houses that have not been rehabbed, and so we are still going to continue to rehab those because, to make sure they meet the requirements. But they will be less extensive rehabs, and we'll put more money into the developments. For 2012, we do plan on replacing all of the windows at El Presidente Development. We're trying to go more energy-efficient and cut down utility costs for our residents. And this way, we're helping 30 families instead of one or two a year. We'll also be looking at doing some site improvements over there, putting in some, like picnic areas, covered tables to make it more of a family site. And then we have some erosion problems and retaining walls that we need to deal with.
The 30, excuse me, the 30 units are located where?
It's in the El Presidente Development, so it's right there behind the Housing Authority. I don't know if you're familiar with it.
Oh, there, yeah.
But if you go down 29, around the corner from the Housing Authority, that development there is El Presidente. It's JFK and right over there.
How many HAP participants do you have?
HAP?
Housing Assistance Program.
Right now, right now, we have around, close to 700, and we will cover the Section Eight program also. For 2013, we plan on spending that grant on replacing some of the hardware and doors and stuff in some of our senior properties. They've been there since they were installed, and a lot of them are, they need to be replaced. We do plan on having an energy audit done and a PNA to kind of address some of the physical needs in the developments. This here is our accountability for the public housing program. This is our, it's called FOAS, and it's the grading that we receive from HUD. These are our scores from 9/30/12, because we'll receive 2013's probably around December. But if you can tell from these, we did score the lowest in the physical, and that is why we're trying to change our annual and our five-year plan from acquisitions to put more money in the developments. Overall, we scored an 85 out of 100, so we're considered a standard performer. And this is the HAP program that Ms. Farmer was asking about. It's our second program. It's also known as Section Eight. A lot of people call it that, but it's the Housing Choice Voucher. This is where families pay a portion of their rent based on their income. They can pay 30 to 40 percent of their adjusted income for rent. Our PHA has 808 vouchers. We are not fully utilized at this time. We have 30 vouchers that are for family unification, 20 that are for non-elderly but disabled, 25 veteran, and 27 for Family Self-Sufficiency Program. So for last year, we expended $3,387,909 in housing assistant payments for the year. On average, we assist 733 families a month, and average half expenses monthly are around Some programs that are under Section Eight that are kind of our favorite programs, Family Self-Sufficiency is a voluntary program for the participant. We help them, the coordinator helps them with finding what barriers are keeping them from being successful and welfare-free, whether it's education or job skills. So we partner with other agencies to try to provide those things to them. We are 93 percent utilized in that program. We have 13 of the 25 families that are earning escrow, meaning they have went from zero rental assistance to where they're paying a portion of their rent and are earning escrow on that. This year, we've added a clothing closet, a computer lab, and we're partnering with HHS-C, so that we're kind of a one-stop shop. When applicants come in, they can apply for food stamps or SNAP, I'm sorry, or Medicaid, other benefits all in one place. Our other program under Section Eight is a VASH program. In 2008, HUD partnered with the VA to try to end homelessness for our veterans. And San Angelo was awarded 25 of those VASH vouchers. And then we also partner with Abilene Housing Authority, so that veterans can port in here and we can assist them also. So we are 100 percent utilized in that program. That's just, I tried to be quick, just a kind of overview of what we have and-
Can I ask you?
Yes.
This is great information, love to have it, but I would love to see these reports come to us quarterly.
Okay.
Because it is such a big part of our community, and to know where it's going, and I would like to see that happen if it's possible. And the other item I wanted to ask is, how many legitimate waiting list families do you have currently?
The last time-
I mean, qualify.
Yeah, that are actually, we don't screen them until they actually are issued a voucher, but our waiting list is at about 600 right now for Section Eight. And it's a little lower than that for public housing, but I don't know the exact number. But I'd be glad to send you over the reports if you want quarterly, just kind of our occupancy and where we're at. Happy to do that. We are, we do plan on turning in an annual report to you at the end of this year, once we have our scores from FOAS and CMAP. We will gladly, we're going to do an annual report and turn it into the mayor, and we'll send a copy to Senate Council members as well.
Thank you. The mayor's back. He resurrected, so-
Thank you, ma'am.
He's back with you.
We do have one other program. It's affordable housing that's at Desert Shadows. That's our last one. There's 112 units over there that are considered affordable housing. We have been rehabbing Desert Shadows, so this is just kind of the last three phases. The third phase is going on right now. We have contractors that are just starting right now. And that's, that's the last of our program. That's all that we have.
I had a quick question on your assessment. Who actually, does somebody come in and score you, or who does that?
Well, it depends. We're graded on four different types. For our financials, of course, we have an auditor that comes in and does that. For the physical, it's called React, and they come in and they do an inspection. We're inspected every other year by HUD inspectors, and then we have a, we contract an inspector to come out every year to make sure that we're prepared for those inspections.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Let's move on to number 18. Number 19. We've already done 18.
17?
We've already done-
We were going to take 19 because-
Yeah, we was going to take 19 because the sheriff and the-
That's right.
Sheriff and the police department. It's all right with everyone. Let's move on to number 19. First public hearing, consideration introducing an ordinance, amending Chapter 10 Traffic Control Regarding the Operation of Golf Carts. Ordinance of the City of San Angelo, Texas, amending Chapter 10 Traffic Control, San Angelo Code of Ordinances, add a new Article 10, 1700, entitled Operation of Golf Carts on Public Streets, in order to allow and regulate the operation of golf carts on any part of the traffic area of any public street or highway within the city limits where the posted speed limit is not more than 30 miles per hour, providing definitions, establish limitations on such operations, establish requirements for equipment, annual registration, establishing administrative processes, establishing a registration fee, providing for a penalty for violation of this ordinance, add amending Penix A, entitled Article 3000, business-related fees to add a new section to 3.1300, golf cart registration fee, providing for severability, inviting for the effective date of the ordinance. Your own, Chief.
We came, I guess, last meeting, we discussed the ordinance. There were some changes that the Council requested. I think that Alicia did some cleanup on it as well. And so you have the new wording with the new changes that were in there that you requested. I think we were able to put that 30 miles per hour in there. We were also able to eliminate the age requirement on passengers, was something else I think that the Council indicated they want it removed. And that was pretty much it, wasn't it?
Correct.
Okay, that's it. So go ahead.
Robbie?
Tim, the question I got, a bunch of people called me yesterday over this deal, and this is not going to affect the, any residents that are around golf courses or anything like that. The state law, isn't it two miles within a golf course?
Yes, and we still have the state law that those around golf courses need to follow.
Right.
Yeah, this is-
But they don't have to get a permit on their golf-
No, this is for commercial purposes.
I want to just make that really clear, because I don't want to get 14 calls today.
You know, and something that I would, that I would just throw out at this time is that you would have the ability to allow a particular neighborhood to use golf carts. For instance, Bentonwood is probably the one that you were getting a lot of calls on. They have a lot of golf carts where children are in and out, going, you know, back and forth, and people are running from house to house or whatever, and all that's in violation of the state law. And so we try to address those as we can, but that might be something that you might want to bring to the table later on, is the consideration of allowing the operation of golf carts freely in that neighborhood, which you have the authority to do.
Freely by allowing kids to?
You can, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a little clause in the state law that says you can allow, was under certain restrictions, you could allow the use of golf carts in a, what is the word I'm looking for? In an area, a platted area of some sort, something like that?
Subdivision.
Yes. There are two separate statutory sections, and the one that you're inquiring about with regard to golf courses is a different statutory section. This is enacted under a section which allows us to regulate, as Chief has explained.
Perfect. I'm happy with this.
Okay. Well, you want to move in?
Sound like a move or a motion?
Yes. I move that we accept the ordinance as we presented it.
Anybody want to second it? Done? Yes, Charlotte?
I'm just confused. If we could allow golf courses, these EJT, is that what you would call it, this two miles?
Yes.
Why can't we do that with apartment complexes who use the golf courts in the line of work, you know?
Because they're not within, they're not for golf course usage. There's some stipulations in the law that say that they have to be going back and forth to the golf course. Now, the, some cities have changed the allowance, but what I want you, what we are trying to do with this ordinance is we're trying to restrict the usage of the golf carts. We see the need for ASU, we see the need for apartment complexes, we see the need for UPS, because that's what they've been doing. And so we just don't want golf carts running all over town.
Right.
So that's why we have this, that's why we brought this ordinance forward.
Charlotte, apartment complexes will be able to use it.
Okay.
As long as it's under 30 miles an hour where they're using it.
Right.
So I think-
And permitted.
That's right.
And inspected.
And we should have, we should have the stickers, the permit stickers, which we're, Corby's designing, as well as the applications completed very soon, sometime mid-December after the second reading, we might be ready to start inspections for the first of the year.
You good with this, Joe? Any other comment from Council? Have any comment from the public? If not, I've got a motion that we accept this as written. It has been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Put a 7-0 on that one. We have one more item, since we have the sheriff here. Let's get this taken care of. Number 20. This is discussion and possible action related to an increase in the support of the Tom Green County Mental Health Unit and Tom Green County Crisis Intervention Unit. Chief Foskis, your honor.
During the budget process, we asked for an increase in this particular, increase to our contribution to the Mental Health Unit, as well as Crisis Intervention. We, it was not increased, it's the rate stayed the same. And so we had a meeting with the sheriff and city manager and a bunch of people from the county, as well as some judges, and we discussed this. And after further discussion, again, we want to come to you and ask for that increase that we asked for during the budget session to, for the Mental Health Unit. Basically, it's a 50-50 split for us. We do use the Mental Health Unit a lot. I would say that our Mental Health Unit is an example to the rest of the state, and we've got some great teamwork going. Crisis Intervention as well is something that we use very often. You know, domestic violence being our number-one call for service in our community, they respond and assist the victims of domestic violence anytime we call.
I think this has been a very good, very profitable partnership for the city, and I would certainly like to keep it. Anybody want to?
I move that we accept this.
I'll second that.
I'll accept that motion and that second. Any other further counsel comment? Charlotte?
I have a question. Total increase requested, it's not in the budget, is it $37,539?
Yes, I believe that's for, just for Mental Health, or for both? Is that for both?
I just want to know where that $37,000 is coming from, Mr. Dane.
Well, after our meeting the other day, Mr. Valenzuela suggested we start looking in case that question came up, and they have started looking. I'm not aware that they've-
Found the source?
Do we have an answer to that?
Here they come. It is 37 total for both of them.
Okay.
Just write a check.
Just write a check?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. You want to see those guys put me in handcuffs, huh?
Good morning. As a result of last week's meeting and Daniel Valenzuela's direction, myself and Ms. Benel started looking for solutions. We did have a small amount of contingency set aside in the general fund, and we'll utilize that to fund the $37,000.
Is all of that ours, or just half of it?
The total of $37,000 is what's needed, and that'll be an internal budget amendment that just requires Mr. Valenzuela's approval, and it's, will be submitted-
Four hour half.
37,000 is the amount the city needs to come up with.
Yeah. And I was just going to say, as Fire Marshal, I use this program, and gosh, we need to keep it. It's a tremendous help at 2:00 in the morning when you can call somebody that can assist you out there.
But let me ask, Winkie's got a good question. It is kind of confusing when you read the caption or the summary. It's Tom Green County is requesting an increase of $31,000 and change for the mental health, and $5,000 for the crisis, total increase of $37,000. So is that Tom Green County, or is that?
No, that's, that's all our money. The request was, you know, for instance, I want to say-
Their request, okay.
Yes, their request at 50 percent was like 110 or something like that for mental health. And then we were at 77,000 last year and the year before, and so we didn't do an increase, so that's where that might-
I got you, Chief, I got you.
Okay. Any other questions? Public comment? If not, we have a motion that has been made that we come up with an additional $37,000 to fund this, and it has been seconded. Done?
Yes. Have y'all looked toward COG for any, any help on this stuff? Because my thought is, this is very minimal, and it's going to keep on getting worse.
MHMR funds a third of this program. So it's a partnership between MHMR, the county, and the city. So that's what's funding this. And at least with the mental health, crisis intervention, part of it's funded through grants, and then the county and the city fund partners. We've been partners since early 2000 on all these programs, so we want to continue it. It's a good program. It benefits the city. In fact, the city gets about 85 percent of all the services from both of these units. So anyway, we just want to fund it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Got a motion and a got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? I'm sorry, Winkie, did you have a comment, sir?
No, I was just scratching.
Okay. Don't do that at an auction. Okay, if this has been approved, and we will move backwards to number 17. Number 17 is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance related to the City of San Angelo's application of existing policies regarding commercial property development moratorium and related matters. An ordinance of the City of San Angelo, Texas, adopting a commercial property development moratorium in accordance with state law upon public hearing and issuance of written findings to expire 90 days after the date that the moratorium is adopted, including but not limited to approval of new applications for commercial property development related to mobile homes, manufactured housing parks, recreational vehicle parks, providing, recreational vehicle parks, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date. AJ, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
What number?
We'll try to keep the item as short as possible. 17.
Why does yours look different? You read the whole thing?
No, there's been some changes, and- No, there's been some changes and, I read the outline. I have the new, I have the new-
Oh, you are, you are the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry.
This is the mayor's edition of the agenda.
Gotcha.
We'll try to keep the presentation short as well. We're here to discuss the consideration of an actual formalized ordinance that would establish a 90-day moratorium. This would be regarding, of course, RV parks and manufactured housing. You may recall back in August of this year, this council met and discussed giving direction to staff on this, on this item, and with the 6-0 motion instructed staff to go ahead and begin drafting an ordinance that would accomplish the things that we'll talk about here in just a moment. So essentially, for the viewer who is probably not familiar with the action of moratorium, the moratorium is actually a local ordinance that we would pass. The intent behind it is to temporarily suspend applications for a particular use while the community as a whole and as a municipality takes the time to consider the issue, come up with draft regulations, and then adopt any planning documents or ordinances that would adequately address that issue. The effects of this moratorium are outlined in your background. We also put those into one of the captions. Very simply put, however, the four actions that would be in effect if this moratorium was passed today is number one, there would be no action taken on special use permit applications. You might remember back in the spring, we had, for a limited time, a flurry of applications requesting special uses for this type of nature. Under the moratorium, those applications would be suspended and not acted on for the 90-day period. The same would be true for application for zone changes, as well as site plans, whether it be for expansion of an existing park or a new park, and also applications for any sort of site plan amendments. So, essentially, all of those items would be suspended. The framework for moratoriums is outlined in the local government code under state law. It does require two readings, as any ordinance does. Today would be the first reading with this group. What is unique about the moratorium regulations is that the moratorium, if passed today, would actually become in effect on the 22nd of this month. However, if the second reading failed, the moratorium would then be suspended. The moratorium was also required to be taken to the planning commission, another requirement in the state law. We'll talk about the recommendation here in just a moment. I do want to point out, although the 90-day period is specific, we are not allowed to assign an arbitrary time limit to it. If we are able to get to a point where the council is comfortable with regulations that are imposed within the 90 days, we can certainly move forward. You're not required to use the entire 90-day cycle. On the other hand, if you're at a point, at that particular point in time where you're not comfortable with where we are, this council also has the ability to extend that moratorium for an additional time period. You might recall that there was a temporary housing committee that was formulated. The city manager's office sort of led the coordination of that group. We did, after consulting with our legal staff, essentially polled those members to try to get some feedback from them to also give to you as a council for your consideration of their recommendation. We did receive five responses from that committee. There were four items that were put together in the poll essentially that we sent out to survey those members. First, we asked them essentially whether they agreed or agreed, or disagreed rather with the statement that a moratorium was needed in order to conduct additional research and make sure that regulations that we have on the books actually address the issue that we're trying to talk about. Four of those members felt that, yes, that that was something that was necessary. All five agreed with the statement that there is an escalating demand for temporary housing that is related to the oil industry, and as such, that needed to be looked at. Four of the five also agreed with the statement that there is a supply issue with rental housing, whether it be apartments or rental housing in terms of single family, and that because we know that there is an issue with the rates being increased and the ability of people to find appropriate housing, that that needed to be looked at as an issue within our community. And then lastly, four of those five also agreed that, in looking at other Texas communities that have been through this issue, that there are some adverse effects that can be experienced, and as such, our city needs to sort of brace ourselves, if you will, for that. The planning commission discussed this at length yesterday. They did make a unanimous recommendation to you that you do enact the 90-day moratorium today. They also wanted to add in their recommendation to the council that this temporary housing committee be reconvened. The committee had talked at length about the current RV park regulations. They had started to scratch the surface, if you will, of the temporary housing in RVs. And so, the thought is that there really was some good work done there, and it makes sense to pick up that work and continue with it, and not throw the baby out with the bathwater and start over, so to speak. So today, your options are to approve the moratorium as it's presented. You can modify those provisions if you'd like to do so, or of course, you can deny the moratorium. You might remember that state law is very specific that there have to be certain findings that support the need for a moratorium ordinance. It's not something that we can enter into lightly or arbitrarily. We have to be able to make a case that a moratorium is necessary in order for this community to make adequate provisions. And so, in the ordinance, our city legal staff worked with not only the development services department, but other departments, including the water utilities department, the police department, the fire department, et cetera, to get an accurate understanding of the effects that this activity could have on all of those departments, and found that there were substantial findings, in fact, that could justify this ordinance. I do want to mention very briefly, we've had a lot of questions about what happens if someone did want to move forward during the moratorium period. There is a provision in the ordinance that gives this council the authority to make that determination. There is a clause that talks about an undue hardship. In that case, the applicant would have to approach the council and be able to convince you that there should be a special exception made for their project, so you're essentially in the driver's seat on that. The second area is pending projects. While we did have some applications on the books that were coming in, again, back in the spring, as of today's date, we do not have in the planning division any current applications. The applications have either been tabled by this body or the planning commission, or they've been withdrawn altogether. The one exception of a current project that we know is on the books and thus would be exempt from this is a slight expansion to Spring Creek RV Park, who is looking to add 15 stalls to their particular park. Their application came in before today, and so, they would be the one project that would be exempted. And with that, I know that's a very fast and furious overview, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Rodney, didn't you bring this up?
Yes.
Then why don't you take it here and give us some direction, sir?
Well, I think that we, we still do have some work that needs to be done by that committee to finalize the rules and regulations that are going to be put in place in this ordinance. So, I don't see any problem with doing the 90-day moratorium, set it down in writing and, and moving forward on that. One of the things I'll just want to point out to everybody is, I checked last night, this, this growth that we saw six months ago is, is slowed, and I mean, it has slowed very, very quickly. Yesterday, I got on, online, and I checked, AHRN is a military website for rentals, and I looked to see how many rentals are available citywide. And there were, there were well in excess of 60 rental houses. Three months ago, there was five. I looked at the same site, there was five three months ago, and there's over 60 last night. I went on Craigslist, and last night, there was, I think, there was 14 houses, not trailer parks, not apartments, but houses that were for rent. Three months ago, there was two. And so, I want everybody to kind of see, this, this is not taking off the way everybody thought it was going to take off six months ago. And, and we need to slow it down, take our time on this, and do all the right stuff. I realize a lot of people are really trying to push everything through as fast as you could and get all these camps in place. And I, I had a couple of friends of mine that went by all the trailer parks that are outside of town. The majority of those trailer parks are not even 50% full, not even 50% full. And so, I, I would like to move that we approve the 90-day moratorium. And I think that we really could get this done faster than 90 days if we just get serious about it and, and get it done, get the rules in place, and just move on so we don't have to deal with this anymore.
So, you're going to add that, that the committee stays together?
Yes, I want, just, just as brought forward to us, I move that we do the moratorium as brought forward, leave the committee in place, and let them finish what they started.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Got a motion, I've got a second. Charlotte, your comment?
Well, I have a question. What would this do, if anything, to the 90-day moratorium for anyone who came before us and we turned down? I mean, would that wipe out them having to wait a year before they come back, or how does that work?
You're talking about the previous applications that have taken action. The zoning ordinance would still remain in effect, and there is a provision, and you just touched on it in the zoning ordinance, that requires them to wait one year before they can ask for the same request on the same property.
So, this 90-day does not affect that issue, that point?
It does not. They would still have to follow that.
I, I just think that this was long overdue anyway, and, and I think it's a good thing. It's going to help San Angelo, you know, and, and probably should have been done a long time ago anyway.
Any further comment from council?
I'll just make a quick comment.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wardlaw?
Well, I agree with everything everybody said, basically, and Mr. Fleming is exactly right. House building has slowed, apartment industry is soft right now, and we got a lot of vacancies, which will give us some time. And all this is, is a result of, of the oil business behaving like it is, and there's still a boom going on. But everybody that was involved in the boom is basically here right now. The client shale has not worked out at this time, and is not contributing much to the influx of people. And actually, the oil business is moving further west right now, to the counties to the west, even further west than Big Lake, than Big Lake and all out in there. So, the boom is going the other direction, and people need to understand that. So, I'm all in favor of, of passing this moratorium and going to work.
Thank you, sir. Any other comment, council? A little bit of public comment? Anyone care to weigh in on this one? If not, we do have a motion that we extend the moratorium a 90-day. We, has been seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Put a 7-0 on that one.
14.
14. Let's see. We've done 19. And we are moving right along, aren't we? You may not have to make that 3 o'clock motion, Mr. Wardlaw. We've done 20. Because at 3 o'clock, I will look for a motion to adjourn. He has an automatic second. Let's see, 21. Let's go ahead and get 21 out of the way. That's the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the continuance to levy and collect a one-half cent sales tax and use tax as approved by the voters on the November 2 to 10 special election. An ordinance amending Article 2.3600, Economic Development and Cooperation of the Code of Ordinances of City of San Angelo, Texas, by amending Section 2.3606 to add a new subsection 1 to include the projects allowed in Section 4B of Article 5190.6, VACS as amended here and after Act for the City of San Angelo to continue to levy and collect a one-half cent sales tax and use tax, said projects having been approved by the voters on the November 2 to 10 special election to be undertaken as allowed by the Act in accordance with the results of the said special election, and to restate and renumber Section 2.3606 in its entirety, providing perseverance, providing for an effective date. And I don't see Bob Sneeman, who's going to run this?
Mayor, I'll, I'll start us off.
Go, Mr. Dane.
While Bob's coming.
There he is.
Pursuing some research on another item. Well, Bob's close enough, he can take it from there. You have the floor, Mr. Sneeman.
Thank you. Sorry about that. You got to it a little quicker than I thought you were going to. We can go through these one at a time if, if council prefers, or I think everything was in your packet as far as what the eligibility is under the ballot. So, if you'd like to go through them one at a time, we can.
Why don't you hit the high points and?
Basically, under the, the 2010 ballot, the first thing that happened was the voters extended the, or they lifted the sunset from the half-cent sales tax, which was at 25 years, I believe. The other thing that they did was they approved certain projects, and then they allocated any fund balance other than those, those funds specifically for those product, projects. I'm sorry. I'm out of breath.
Bob, can I introduce this item a little bit?
Sure.
While Bob and Legal were working together on some, on another issue, I think Legal pointed out that the results of the election should be brought to council in the form of an ordinance, so that it was codified and that we had that ordinance directing the activity. And that's why we're talking today about the results of the election that happened over two years ago. And, and that's what the issue is. This is an attempt to take that ballot and codify it in a, in an ordinance.
So, this, this is housekeeping?
Yes, sir. It's very much housekeeping.
And we, we do it with, with each, the results of each election to deter, to state what was the voters approved for use of the, of the proceeds and for the types of projects and purposes. I mean, we just, we do-
This is, this is not a change at all. We're simply putting in the form of an ordinance the results of that election.
That's correct. The last, the last ordinance reflected the 2004 ballot. This one is reflecting now, is being changed to reflect the 2010 ballot.
Don, did you have something to say, sir?
Well, one of the things that I've wanted to talk about for quite some time, and this will probably lead into it, is not really directly talking about it, but is how we use these monies, how we can use these monies, if we want to change these, use of these monies by going back to our voters and, and talking about some of those sort of things. And, you know, I asked for that at our last meeting, and this kind of reiterates, I think, the, the fact that we might want to look at some of these things after reading.
And how soon would we need to make those decisions, get it on the May ballot? Could we?
On this May's ballot?
Yes. Is it too late?
No.
But we need to do something, what, within the next 30 days?
No.
60 days?
I would have to look at the calendar, probably around January, February deadline. But we need to, if we're going to consider that, we really need to.
Because we've all talked about that. And one of the things that's been thrown out is devoting 1/8 cent of the sales tax to a perennial road fund, and that's just one of the things that we've talked about. There's been other things mentioned as well.
Mayor, would you like something on a future agenda, or would you like some, some kind of a summary calendar prepared and distributed in a Friday?
I think that would be nice. But as far as this, as far as this, I don't see any reason to go ahead and codifying what we've already, what we did in 210. But I do think that, as Don is saying, I think in the next couple of meetings, maybe we need to, to talk about what we might want to put on the, the ballot in May.
And that, Mayor, I would just add that I think times have changed, so if we need to tweak it a little bit, that's fine. But we can't go back and change anything that the people voted that's on the ballot. You know, we can't change anything, I don't think.
I think you could, but you'd have to, they would have to, the voters would have to vote on it.
Approve it.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You, but today, we couldn't do that.
No, sir.
We could, in a future ballot, a future, you know, request.
Be bobby tight.
That's right. And I might also point out, if, if we're going to discuss things of that nature, that there are certain, there are certain restrictions under the state law on what's eligible for use of half-cent sales tax and what's not. And creation of primary jobs is one of the big considerations there.
How about if we, maybe the January meeting, first January meeting, we, we discuss this, we have something on the agenda, so we can kind of look at things?
Let me get the calendar first because we're, it's a really tight schedule at this point.
And Charlotte just made a statement, we may need more time to educate, so maybe next November would be a good time. I don't know. I'm just asking. I do think we need to take it back to the voters, if council agrees, to have some, amend, to, to change it up some, but we don't want to rush it, and we certainly have a time limit to work within.
And my idea is, since this is perpetual, it needs to be addressing perpetual needs.
That's correct.
Our, our cemetery, our streets, you know, those sort of things that are going to be here with us from now on, infrastructure type things.
Can it go there? I mean, can it go streets, for example?
We'll get you, Turner, in just a minute, sir.
There's a, there's an attorney general's opinion out there that addresses some of that. If, for example, you're going to create a street to an industrial park, the industrial park is going to create jobs, therefore, it would be eligible. To just do a street maintenance or street construction project, I think it would be very difficult, but that's my opinion. It's going to take some research.
So, a street that leads to, for example, a sports complex, you know, that, that brings in revenue, you know, with events out there?
Maybe, maybe not. I couldn't say without researching.
I'd just throw Bell Street in there. That'd be-
I really think what we need to do today- I really think what we need to do today is just codify this, the election is in two ten, and then bring us back something. And that's something we can discuss when we have a timetable, and...
Right. And with regard to eligible projects, there's two statutes that have quite a number of provisions that could be interpreted to support different types of projects that you're envisioning. So I think that it's not just a quick reading. You can really get down and look at the interpretation to support a type of project.
So would council, would council agree that we instruct staff to research this and bring us back? Okay. Is anyone who wants to move that would codify this?
Yeah, I'll second. Either way.
Okay, I've got a move, and I've got a second.
And I'll third it.
And a third. Don. Don moved and...
And I.
Marty. I thought Marty said it.
He did, but I third it.
Oh.
Got that.
That, is that kind of clear with council? Is that answer our questions? I know Turner has a public remark. Let's take that, and then we'll make a vote on this. You know the drill, Turner.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and one of the things that's been alluded to already is a street maintenance sales tax. One of the things you have to remember about this half-cent optional sales tax, there's a number of forms that it can take. Right now, we have adopted what's called four B. That's one of the various options. It focuses on economic development, it's allowed us to do improvements at the fairground and so on. If we go to something like street maintenance sales tax, that is not a four B option, but that is something that can be voted in in eighth-cent increments, up to a quarter cent, and it's a four-year automatic sunset, you can't approve it as a perpetual tax. It has to be before the voters every four years. And that would temporarily adjust the four B sales tax down by whatever amount that was approved, and would come out of that eight cent, quarter cent, whatever. And then if it was not approved again, the four B would go right back to what it was. They have to be done as a package, because we're modifying the four B, but that's also allowed. Again, attorney general's opinion. But there are a number of options, even in addition to the street maintenance sales tax, that could be looked at in this half-cent window. Because you've got projects in place and so on, you can eliminate it, don't really want to, because you're getting a lot of benefit out of it. It is a primary source of money for water exploration and development. But at the same time, a portion of that could be voted on to do street maintenance that you can't do under four B, but you could under this street maintenance sales tax, and you'd end up with a quarter cent, I mean, three-eighths of a cent for your regular projects we're doing now, and one-eighth of that cent would go to street maintenance and nothing else. But that needs a lot more information, education, and discussion. But I do think we can get it in front of the voters in May, and that should be the goal. Get as smart as you can, come up with the best use of that money, in addition to what you're doing now, and then put it before the voters, because that's the only way you can actually change it. You can't get rid of these projects, or change the projects, update them, or anything, without going before the voters, even if you want to put one of these other options out there. All of them require voter approval. Thank you.
We've got a motion on the floor. We've got a second that we codify this. Anybody else want to speak? Any more public comment?
While she comes up, how much does an eighth of a cent bring? Anybody?
Half as much as a quarter.
I think when we discussed this one other time, it was a million to a million and a half per year that would go. There, Johnny. Yes, Ms. Dewitt, you know the drill.
Yes. My name is Billy Dewitt, and I just wanted to comment real quickly. I agree with Ms. Farmer. This issue will take a lot of education for the public. We don't really understand all of the restrictions on the half-cent sales tax. So I hear people say, why does my water bill have to continue to go up? Why can't they use some of that half-cent sales tax to pay for the stormwater that has been added to my bill, stormwater fee that has been added to my bill? Why can't the half-cent sales tax be used for this? And I don't think we, as the citizens of San Angelo, really understand all of the restrictions. So I just think delaying it to, for a vote before the public, till later in the year, and take the time to educate the people on what it can, including myself, on what it can and can't be used for, would really, really help us to not criticize, you know, the city council when a decision is made about how the half-cent sales tax is used. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, does that end comment? Anyone else care to weigh in on this? Then let's take a vote. The motion has been made that we pass this as presented. Has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a seven oh on that one. Okay, council, we've got about four or five items left. It is eleven fifty-five. How about we break for executive and lunch, and then come back and finish this? Is that, is everybody ready with that?
Yes.
You agree? Okay. Let me read the executive orders. Michael, what do you think it's gonna take in executive, so we can tell people when we'll be back?
Mayor, we've got a little bit of a long one today.
Yes, sir.
The question will be, how much time do we need to spend on each of those? But I'd say an hour would be optimistic.
How about we say we will be back at one-thirty? Or you want to shoot for one-fifteen, and then one-thirty? Let's, there's quite a few items that we need to deal with here, so let's, it is now eleven fifty-six. By the time I get through reading all of this, it'll be twelve o'clock, and we will be back at one-thirty in open session to continue the rest of our agenda. Is that all right with everybody? Executive closed session, executive session under revision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements. That meetings be open under the following section, Section 551.0711, to consult with attorney on a competent settlement offer to ACAP Health for Clinical Care Engineering Services for the City Health Insurance Program, Ms. Marley. Section 551.0712, to consult with an attorney on a matter in which the duty of attorney to the governmental board under the Texas Disciplinary Rules and Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter regarding quality quarterly invoices dated nine seven two thirteen to ten twenty-nine two thirteen for services rendered pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the cities of Abilene, San Angelo, and Medlin, effective four nine two eleven, West Texas Water Partnership, and subject to confidentiality under said low interlocal agreement. Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property regarding Lake Nazworthy area, Favre, South Concho River, and Lake Nazworthy Real Property Recreational and Grazing Lees, Priest, West Texas Christian Foundation, aka Christian Village Property, and the West Texas Partnership. And lastly, Section 551.074A1, to deliberate the evaluation and duties of the city manager. It is eleven fifty-seven. We are now in executive. Well, I call ten-minute breaks, and they take thirty minutes, so when I said fifteen minutes, I'm just fifteen minutes off, so I guess we're pretty well on schedule. It is... What time is it?
Two o'clock.
It is straight up two o'clock. Let's reconvene this meeting and get it started again. And we will start with item number twenty-two. That is the discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to the thoroughfare plan components of San Angelo's comprehensive plan, specifically planned projection, collector streets bounded by Jackson Street to the north, Knickerbocker to the west, South Bright Boulevard to the east, Loop 306 to the south in south-central San Angelo. Mrs. Favre, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll move through this quickly. This thoroughfare plan amendment was requested by a property owner in the immediate area. There were some concerns, and this is an excerpt of the thoroughfare plan as it exists today. There were some concerns in the central part of this slide. There is a known drainage way that runs through and around Cox Lane. The original projection, as you can see, of some of these future collector streets goes right through that drainage way. And so we have worked with the MPO board, I'll talk about that here in a minute, and their recommendation, the property owner. And we've also worked with many internal staff members to put together an alternative proposal for you. Your options today, of course, are to approve or deny the amendment, or you can also remand the matter back to the Planning Commission, if you'd like to see them discuss this matter further. The proposal that I'll show you here in a minute does carry a positive recommendation from the city staff. We worked extensively with our Engineering Services Division, and we also spoke with TechDOT as part of the MPO to get their input on this matter. The Planning Commission also unanimously, with a seven to zero vote, recommended approval of the proposal, and the MPO board with a unanimous vote of nine to zero also recommends approval. The new proposal is now shown on the slide. As you'll look again to the center part of the slide, you'll notice some of the changes that have occurred. One of the main changes that you might notice, this collector street projection no longer continues through the drainage way as it was originally drawn. In looking at the proposal, the staff members involved worked to work off of existing streets that are already in place and are already improved to collector street standards, and work to extend those streets rather than introduce completely new collector streets. So as you'll note, we have Petro Drive here, I'm sorry, this is Adobe, that is projected now to continue to the west and then continue to turn southwards, giving that east-west alternative to Jackson Street, particularly in times of high traffic or flooding or drainage problems. There is also now a projected indication here showing that this westward projection would continue to connect to a subdivision, Capitol Heights, which is already in existence. The two segments of this street that are currently in existence, here on the east side and here on the west side through Capitol Heights, are currently improved to collector street standards. So it is consistent with what is on the ground currently. The other change that you might notice, as you look at this, is this particular extension of the same collector street that I've been drawing your attention to has been shifted northward. The original projection of that would have coincided with an alley that has now been constructed as part of the subdivision, and that, of course, makes, doesn't make sense at this time, so we've shifted that northward. That's a very brief overview of it. I'll show you with the aerial photograph. That may help orient you again somewhat. The red lines, don't let those be confusing. I know we should have taken those off of this slide, but in this particular area, that's denoting, again, the Cox Farm sort of hole in the city limits of San Angelo. That's still outside of the city limits at this time. With that, I will be happy to open it up for questions. I'm here to answer, and we also have our city engineer. And then we also have Mr. Cornell, who was the original requester of this amendment in attendance today, if you would like to ask him any questions as well.
Rodney, is this in your area?
Or is this yours, Charlotte?
No, it's not mine.
It's not yours?
Parts of it are in my area, but I don't think all of it's in my area.
I don't, I don't believe so, but I'll be honest, I didn't check.
I think most of it is, but not all of it.
What's your feelings on it, sir?
I'm good with it. I wouldn't have any problem with this at all. In fact, I'd like to make a motion that we approve it as presented.
Very well. Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Hey, we got a second. Any further counsel comment on this? Do we have anyone from the public that'd like to speak to this? If not, let's take a vote. I do have a motion that we accept this as presented, which has been seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Let's move on. Number twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you, A.J. Consideration of Accepting the City of San Angelo's Fiscal Year 212 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFFER, and Single Audit as Presented by the City's External Auditor. Ms. Benel, you're on, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. This item is just to present the financial statements and the single audit for fiscal year 2012, and I'm just gonna introduce our external auditors, and they're gonna present the information to you. We have Freddie Moore. He's a partner with Armstrong and Bacchus. Gaila Thornton is a principal with Armstrong and Bacchus, and they perform our audit annually.
Welcome.
Thank you. We, first of all, we want to thank the council and the city management for allowing us, our firm, to work for the city. It's really a privilege and an honor, and we really do appreciate that. So thank you. The financial statements that we audit, of course, are part and parcel to the extensive comprehensive annual financial report that the city prepares. So it's a hundred and thirty-one-page document, so lots and lots of information here. And it's been suggested to us that we just kind of pull back and give you more of a global perspective. First of all, of what we do, kind of what the audit is, and then give you some financial highlights from the governmental, government-wide portion of the audit. So we, you know, the CAFFER is full of financial information, disclosures, management discussion, lots of supplementary information in there. Our job is, we were engaged to render an opinion primarily on the basic financial statements. And we do that, you know, so an audit, just as for a point of clarification, you know, we don't look at all the transactions. We have to go in there and use materialities and scopes, and we test the various account balances and transactions for the purpose of giving, that we can obtain reasonable assurance that there are no material misstatements in there. So a lot of people, I'm sure not this body, but some people think an audit is, you know, we verify every detail and every transaction down to the penny. Well, certainly, that's not the case. But because of this reasonable assurance concept, you know, we go in and we look at those items that we think have the risk associated, and those items that are material to the financial statements. We did that. We performed our testing, and the opinion that we rendered on the basic financial statements is an unqualified opinion. That means we obtained reasonable assurance that there are no material misclassifications in these financial statements. That's the preferred opinion that you would want. That's the opinion that indicates we didn't find problems in the financial statement audits. As far as financial highlights, I'm gonna pull back and kind of give you a really broad picture. If we need to delve, I know you probably look a lot more into fund accounts and those balances. We thought it'd be better to give you more of a global perspective of what the city's financial situation or position and activities were for the year ended two thousand, September 30th, 2012. The city had total assets of four hundred and ninety-two million dollars in total as of September 30. The city was obligated on total, for total liabilities, of two hundred and sixty-six million for that period. Of that two hundred and sixty-six million dollars, two hundred and forty-one million represented long-term debt, debt that's gonna extend out for several years. So that would leave current liabilities, liabilities that the city's gonna have to consume current resources in the thirteen fiscal year of about twenty-five million dollars. So four hundred and ninety-two million dollars in total assets, two hundred and sixty-six million dollars in total liabilities. The city's net assets, its equity in its assets is two hundred and twenty-six million dollars. When you compare that to the prior year, the city's net assets were two hundred and sixteen million, roughly. So the net assets grew by approximately ten million dollars for the current year. When we look at the two hundred and twenty-six million dollars of net assets, the lion's share of that are committed for various projects or restricted resources. But there are seven million dollars of unrestricted net assets that existed as of September 30th, 2012. Just to give you some other perspectives, some global numbers. Total revenues, which consisted of fees, taxes, and such, were amounted to a hundred and twenty-one million dollars for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2012. Total costs and expenses of, cost of operations, were a hundred and ten million dollars. You net those two together, that's where you get the ten million dollar increase to the city's net assets for that period. Another component, one that I know gets talked about a lot, and one that we pay particular attention to in our audit, is water and sewer. And one of the reasons that that, not just because of what we hear and have read, but when you look at the materiality of the water and sewer fund compared to the entire city, it's significant. So we address that in our audit procedures. And just to kind of quantify that, of the city's a hundred and twenty million dollars of total... And just to kind of quantify that, of the city's $120 million of total revenues, 41 million of that are water-sewer-related, a third. Of the city's $225 million of total net assets, $134 million, much more than 50% of the city's net assets are related to the infrastructure for the water-sewer fund. And, of course, because of that significance, because of certain risks that are associated with that, we do, in fact, and did, apply specific procedures to billings, to usage, to revenues, costs and expenses associated with the water and sewer department. Of course, all of this information and all of our audit findings were discussed at length with the Audit Committee at their meeting on September 19th of this year. So, are there particular questions about that? I know it's an awful lot to absorb, but I'll be glad to address or deal with any questions that you may have.
The bottom line is that everything looks good. You saw nothing out of order? You saw nothing wrong? You saw no errors?
Well, I would say that we, to put it in the terms of an accountant or an auditor, we had reasonable assurance that there were no material misstatements. Certainly, there, you know, could be immaterial instances of misstatements, but nothing that would materially affect a user's conclusions about the financial statements.
Charlotte?
I want to ask if the procedures that the city manager's office or the finance office put in place on the items that you pointed out, they're a response to you? Is that a satisfactory procedure to correct those inefficiencies?
Absolutely. We felt like that was a reasonable and prudent approach to correct those errors. Gaila is going to visit with you about the single audit.
May I ask you a quick question?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, would it, is it safe to say that what you're saying is maybe, you mentioned the stormwater fee, it sounds like, or did you not?
No.
He said sewer and water.
Sewer.
Sewer and water, yeah, as the enterprise funds.
That we are collecting too much, or? That's a big balance. I mean, I think you said something like 41 million?
Well, that's the gross revenue that was produced by sewer and water fees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I must have dozed off. You were in your happy place.
Yeah. I think so.
I'm going to talk about single audit for just a few minutes. In addition to the financial statement audit, we are required to audit your grants. Single audits required by Office of Management Budget, anytime a not-for-profit or government expends more than $500,000 in federal grant money, they have to have a single audit. You guys had $5 million worth of federal funds that you all expended during fiscal year 2012. And because of that, we're required to test your compliance over those grants and your internal control over the compliance of those grants. And we don't test all the grants, and there's a calculation of risk assessments and how much each grant is, the expenditures are. And so, we tested 25% of your grants. That was what was required this year. Those grants we tested were the Airport Improvement Grant and the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Some of the things we tested, allowable activities, did you spend your money on what it was supposed to be spent on? Cash management, did you manage grant advances appropriately, or did you commingle it with the rest of your city funds? We tested something like reporting. The Airport Improvement Grant, we had no findings. The Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, we had one finding, which was a repeat of last year, and it had to do with reporting. There were federal expenditures reported to the granting agency before they were actually incurred by the city. So, we did report that as a significant deficiency. But all of the other previous prior-year findings had been corrected. So, that's the single audit. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Counsel, Johnny?
Does that mean that the one finding that you found, does that mean we spent the money before? No?
You reported that you spent the money before you actually spent it.
Oh.
Yeah, but you, it was a timing issue, but you did eventually spend it.
But it's happened again. I mean, it happened last year, and then again?
Yes, sir.
So.
But that grant has since been completed, so, you know, that shouldn't be a finding next year.
We won't do it again.
Hopefully. The only other thing we wanted to address today were some upcoming changes to your CAFR in the next year or three years.
Gaila, before you get into that, could I talk a little about that finding and what corrective action was taken? Our external auditors and our Audit Committee, Ms. Farmer is one of the members on that committee, and she has worked with us toward refilling that internal audit position and getting us some finance department help on grant administration. And that error occurred because we had a non, somebody who didn't understand the financial side of the activity doing that reporting. Since then, we have tasked the internal auditor with assisting with grant oversight and administration, and that has been a good move. It has helped solidify the financial side of grant administration. And it's no guarantee that we won't have problems in the future, but this problem in particular would not have occurred with more finance involvement. So, we appreciate the support from the auditors, from Ms. Farmer, and from the rest of the internal audit, or the rest of the Audit Committee. And we feel good about that change.
We, do you have, oh, no, we have changes. We have a couple of changes that are coming up to your CAFR. This large report's going to look a little different next year. COSA DC has been included as a blended component unit for many, many years. The GFPA in the past has said that that was okay, but has recently kind of changed their opinion and said that it shouldn't be presented as part of the primary government. So, your net assets next year will be lowered because COSA DC will be taken out of the primary government's numbers. That's a change. The other change coming up for the 2015 audit is GASB 68 accounting for, accounting and financial reporting for pensions. Your unfunded liabilities on all your pensions will be required to be reported as liabilities. And this number's large. We're not, that's an actuarially determined number. It's different every year. I can't guesstimate what that number is, but it will be significant to your financial statements, and that will be a big change in 2015.
It will decrease the city's net assets by some number that we would consider very material. But this is something that's been in the works for a while, but it's going to be required to be reported in the next couple of fiscal years.
I had a question on that. I was kind of dozing off a little bit. On your unfunded liabilities, I'm sure you're talking about pensions, but also are you going to have unfunded liability totals on our health insurance for retirees?
That, the GASB addressed it a little differently. It is being added to your financial statements incrementally. The entire liability wasn't required to be put on the financials all at one time. So, it's about $4 million a year that gets added to your liability with your OPEB benefits, and it's already in effect. The upcoming GASB only relates to your defined benefit plan.
As I saw a number of somewhere $80-some-odd million in unfunded liabilities, have you seen a number like that?
I have. That is your total unfunded liabilities on your OPEB plan, and it's getting added to your financial statements as a liability at $4 million a year.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Michael, is this?
Good luck, Don.
Is this a good place to bring up the fund balance proceeds as to what we might want to look at?
For accumulating and dedicating and then utilizing fund balances?
Yes, as to how it can help us with this big gap that we're going to be facing.
Well, really, that is a big discussion for a financial strategy for satisfying any obligation, so.
Put it on for another time. Okay.
Do we have any further comment from counsel? Do we have any comment from the public? Then somebody needs to move that we accept the City of San Angelo Fiscal Year 212 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Single Audit as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, I got a second. If there is no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All of those in favor of accepting it, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Put a six-oh on that one, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you.
Let's move on now. Number 24, discussion and consideration of the possibility of issuing rebates of water fees and any action related thereto. Ms. Morgan?
This is the item for, to talk about water rebates that we talk about every April and November. You'll recall from previous discussions that this is a routine item that's in the water ordinance, in that water rate ordinance, that we will talk about it twice a year and look at that fund balance, assess the amount that's in there, and assess if there is any action that could be taken by the council. So, when we talk about the condition of the water fund, I'm going to get into exact numbers here in just a moment, but just to give you some history on it, that since the inception of this ordinance, we have taken, the council has taken action two different times. Once, there was a rebate granted, and for that, we just forgave the base fee for two months to all water customers. The second time we took action, we used that excess fund balance to actually transfer into the capital fund so that that monies could be used for much-needed infrastructure improvements as allowed by the rate. So, where we are on this fund right now is the estimated fund balance, of course, dependent on the 2013 audit, could change this, but what we estimate that fund balance to be as of September 30th, 2013, is $2,766,039. This number is less than our goal. We have a policy that sets our goal for that fund balance to be 75 days of operating expenses, which would be more like 5.2 million. So, you'll see there's a substantial gap there between what's actually in fund balance and what our goal would be. Of course, that goal is set forth for any inclement economic activity or any natural disaster. So, since that fund balance is low, and since this is about the lowest it's been in recent time, primarily due to the drought that we're selling less water because we have less water. So, because of that, staff recommends no action at this time.
And we all know, we ask our people to conserve, and they have conserved, and when they conserve, we don't sell water. And this is probably the first time this has come up that I didn't feel we needed to give a rebate. I'll take counsel comments on this.
What sets the goal?
Pardon me?
What sets the goal?
The 75-day goal. It's a policy set by council that can certainly.
I understand that, but for both the council members, I was just curious if they had read the ordinance and is that 20%? Because the goal was originally set at the 20%.
The goal is 75 days of operating expenses. So, the total expenses divided by 365 days, times 75 days, is how we arrive at that 5.2 million.
The idea being, if you had no cash flow for 75 days, and if cash flow was the same amount every day of the year, you could operate for 75 days with no cash flow. It's simply a standardized method for setting or measuring, setting and measuring fund balance amounts, liquid fund balance amounts. Did I hear a motion from you, Mr. Wardlaw?
Yeah, maybe the counsel take no action.
Anybody want to second that? Got a motion, I've got a second. Any further comment?
I have a question. Morgan, what happens to this balance, the 5.2 million? I mean, does it?
5.2 million was our goal. We've, we did not have 5.2 million dollars.
Okay, the, we did not, okay.
That's a goal, that's a.
We have 2.7.
Correct.
And what happens to that balance?
It stays in fund balance and is eligible for future use. Anytime we have revenues in excess of budget or we have expenditures less than budget, that fund balance can grow. But this fund balance is decreasing, of course, because revenues are down, and we're trying to manage expenses. We certainly are cutting expenses in the water fund as we are able to manage that, that the water sales being less, but as a result, the fund balance is 2.7 million. It will sit in fund balance until action is taken by the council.
But there's no other monies besides that, I mean, in the fund balance now? That is it? That's 2.7? Or do you add it to, is there another dollar amount out there in the fund balance now? Or is this, this is it?
These are the unrestricted dollars. The others are either restricted or set aside for liquidation of liabilities.
Okay.
But if we continue to have losses, the important thing is, what are we going to do in the future? And we'll be working on that, and we've already started working on that, and running some, a proposal by Daniel, and I'm sure that will make its way to a future council meeting. We need to sell water to pay for those expenses. And as we continue to not sell water, obviously, the net losses would continue without some other change.
Needs to rain. Any further comment? You've already spoke about that today, haven't you, Rodney? Any public comment on this? Now, I'll call for the vote. All that are in favor of accepting the possibility of no action at this time, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a six-oh on that one.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As I look over your shoulder, I'm looking at the agenda you have printed out, and I think the ones that we loaded on everybody's computers this morning does not have the addendum item. It's not the next item, but if, and I don't think there's any attachment to it. Is it just a caption, Alicia?
Yes.
All right. So, I'm seeking your advice. Do we need to reload everybody's current agenda for that addendum item?
I don't think so, because they had it as an addendum, and you just simply put it on mine. Instead of being on the second page as an addendum, she just added it to mine. So, you still have the addendum, you still have the information, it just.
Actually, we have, we have nothing.
You, well, I had an addendum.
I've got it.
Yeah. I got an addendum with this item on it.
We have.
I don't have it on this.
It's not in the computer.
Agenda. But it was, it was sent to us in our packet.
It was properly posted and sent in the packets, but when the files were loaded on the computers this morning, it was not in that file. And so, we can stop and reload, but I don't think there's any information to load except the caption. So, I don't think it's a problem, but I wanted to seek your advice.
What do you think, counsel? Keep moving. Rodney? Johnny? Charlotte?
Maybe I don't understand keep moving.
You want to go ahead and deal with this, or do you want to put it off until we can do something else?
Oh, no, I didn't mean, I meant just so that we could load the file on the computer.
You know, we know the figures. We're talking about those three figures that were sent back to the Development Corporation. We know the figures. Do we, do you need to look at the figures, or can we just list the figures?
What it says, it just went over there, is just to discuss in the direction for our 2013-14 budget, I believe is the way it reads.
We know the figures. Do we need them in front of us, or can we deal with it as it is?
The only issue is that as we look at these items on the screen, there's not one that says addendum and then has the caption. That's the only problem, Mayor, but I wanted to make sure when we got to that one, you didn't think we were all nuts, because we weren't seeing it on the screen.
Well, that doesn't stop me thinking you're nuts.
Okay, we'll keep moving. Now, I'm confused.
It's okay, proceed.
Proceed.
And your point is?
All right, let's move on to 25. This is first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the 213-214 budget, an ordinance of the City of San Angelo amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 213, and ending September 30, 214, for encumbrances, restricted and dedicated monies, incomplete projects, and grants. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you. Before you today is the second amendment to the budget this year. The biggest item there, of course, are what we colloquially refer to as carryovers, but we have several items here before you. So, I'm going to skip over to the page that says additional information. This will have the detail of each of these amendments there for you. And of course, the memos are available if we need to delve into more information. The budget carryovers are about 18 million, this budget amendment before you today is about 18, $19,567,000. This is a little less than it was last year, several million dollars less, so we are managing expenses and tightening the controls on what gets a carryover. But, so the budget carryovers are that first-line item there for amendment. These are routine items that have already been, they've already received whatever approval level was necessary. We just need to get the money out of the 2013 budget and into the 2014 budget so that these programs can continue on. Lots of categories of these carryovers. Lots of categories of these carryovers. The first one there are encumbrances. These are items that were ordered in fiscal year 13, but just because we, in the fiscal year on September 30th, they weren't received yet. So $10.2 million in encumbrances, and those are orange, if you're following along on the detail. And grants are all the items highlighted in pink. Of course, these are routine grants that have already been approved by the council, where again, just moving those monies into any leftover prior-year funds into our fiscal year 14 budget. So we have $2,401,000 in grant expense to amend, and $2,594,000 in grant revenue to amend. The next item there are citizen contributions. Those are the items, there's a one line there that's in brown related to those. These are donations from the community that must be used for whatever program they were donated towards. So the most common one, you'll see that the Parks Department has several, for example, for their plant-a-tree program. So that's an example of what those citizen contributions are used for, and they must be carried over so they can be used in that way. The next item is a very similar one. These are restricted items. They're noted in purple on your sheet. They're limited for use either by federal law, state law, or local directive by our council. And so a good example of those are the tiers tax that has to be used specifically for community reinvestment, and the streetscape project is the one that's on for carryover here before you today. The last of the carryovers there is all capital projects in green. You would expect, of course, that a lot of capital projects are going to span multiple fiscal years, and so we have $3,286,000 worth of capital projects to carry over into the new fiscal year. So those are all the budget carryovers. Again, these items had available budget in fiscal year 13 and need to be carried over and added to our fiscal year 14 budget.
Questions, council? Again, it's just housekeeping, we're just trying to...
Yes.
Anybody want to move for approval on this?
I move that we approve.
Second.
Got a, got a motion, and I've got a second. Any further consideration, but council? Johnny?
Morgan, what was that $25,000 contribution, the citizen's contribution? Was that that Riverfest, or what was that?
Yes. There was $30,000 budgeted for Riverfest, and of course, some of that revenue was received in fiscal year 13, but the event occurred in fiscal year 14, so we need to carry over that revenue that was budgeted.
Any public comment on this? Call for the vote. All in favor of accepting, it's aye. Aye? Any opposed, nay? Put a 6-0 on that one.
Thank you.
And now we are to the addendum, and the addendum item says, "Discussion and consideration of providing direction to the City of San Angelo Development Corporation regarding the fiscal year 213 and the 214 budget." This has to deal, this has to do with some, with some items that Mr. Wardlaw sent back to the Development Corporation for consideration, and then Charlotte has requested that this be put on the agenda for discussion. But Sneeman, your own, sir.
Thank you, sir. See if I can do a little better job of finding my own file this time.
Are you confused as well?
No, sir. Ms. Farmer, I don't have a lot of detail as to what you want to talk about. Would you like me to go through those items, first of all, that we talked about last time?
Yes, in watching the meeting that I missed, council, I believe, gave direction to another council member to send this back, the budget back to COSA DC to review again, because they didn't want to approve certain expenses. Am I correct? Okay. And that's what I'm asking to review, to bring up, so it's fair to COSA DC if they have a direction of where council wants to go with the dollar. And these three items, from my understanding of COSA DC meeting and talking to my appointee, they went ahead and approved them anyway, and did not, they took note of council's direction, but they didn't follow with council's direction. So just needed an explanation of possibly they have a different view of where things are going, that I need to understand.
Okay. I can, I'll do the best I can to paraphrase the discussion.
Okay.
And take them sort of in, these are the items we were talking about. Basically, the TMCN membership, which is $5,592, High Ground of Texas at $10,000, and then the 20 Under 40 program sponsorship at $5,900. We took the last item first, and that's probably a good place to start here as well. On the TM, on the 20 Under 40, that event took place last week. The board was one of the presenting sponsors. The feeling, the feeling was that it would be, and I believe I'm quoting exactly, one of the board members, it would be irresponsible at this stage of the game to withdraw that sponsorship. So they, the board elected to continue with it. As was also explained during the discussion, there is an item in our strategic plan that was approved by council that addresses the importance of trying to maintain young talent, young professionals in San Angelo. We've had a brain drain, if you will, of young talent, that they graduate from Angelo State, or they graduate from our school system, and they go, they go elsewhere to look for a job. This program is one of the few ways that we have of supporting the young professionals of San Angelo in, and we can do this in the form of advertising. What we get from the Standard Times is a pretty prominent set of ads displaying the COSA DC logo, talking about COSA DC as the presenting sponsor. Scott Tankersley, our board president, wrote an article that was published in the 20 Under 40 publication. We get a great deal of advertising exposure, if you will, for that program, and in return, the Standard Times will make a contribution to the young professionals of San Angelo organization. COSA DC cannot make a direct contribution there. The only way we can do this is as advertising, and that's the way we've done it for the last two years.
Okay, that, I understand the program. It's great. It, to me, to put it short, it says you're taking a big city ocean and turning us into a smaller ocean so that there can be bigger whales in the ocean here. I agree with it. It's a great program. Where I've run into a little bit of problems mentally, half-cent sales tax money. I don't see a direct connect with economic development. Possibly this is something that the city, you know, should have done and support, and the COSA DC money is for economic development, the half-cent sales tax. So, and I do know you've got a small area that you can have advertising dollars in there, but in looking at things through the budget, you know, we're already spending $225,000 a year through the chamber to promote San Angelo through advertising. It's supposed to be in that. An additional $75,000 a year to the Downtown Association, which promotes San Angelo, and advertising is in that. And I think we do a great job with the McLaughlin Advertising Agency, the trade-out that we get a percentage of what he sells in advertisement pushing and for San Angelo. So there's where my question was, is this a continued expense that we approve as a council for expenditure of half-cent sales tax funds? Or is this something that is not truly spent, intended with half-cent sales tax money? That's my question. And I think me, as well as the board, would need to know what direction that they should take in something like that.
And I think the board is open to direction from council in any of these areas. The distinction I might make with 20 Under 40 versus what the chamber does, what a lot of the other marketing efforts are, is there's marketing, where we are marketing the city, where we are trying to attract companies to come here. And then this is advertising, that is specifically advertising the Development Corporation and its programs. So there, there's the distinction. And that's why there's, it's my understanding, anyway, in having read through the 4B laws, or the 4B state law, that we have a limited amount of money that we can spend on advertising, and that's their, that is their, their word.
What was the total money spent for COSA DC for advertising in the previous year?
I would have to go back and look, I'm not sure. But are you talking about advertising of this nature?
Mm-hmm.
Last year, I think the only thing that we did was 20 Under 40. And last year was the first year that we supported this. Several years back, there was a campaign that was done through the city's advertising folks for specific COSA DC, or half-cent sales tax funded projects where the, where the signs were put up, and that, but that was 2010, I believe. Calendar year 2010.
And I guess what I'm looking at, and I feel like I'm alone up here talking about it, maybe not, maybe so, but since I wasn't here, is in the good faith to the people about, you know, they voted for things in the half-cent sales tax, and it's very specific as to what it could be spent on and not spent on. And I'm just looking from above at the expenses in the COSA DC have gone up, 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 but the production of what we're bringing in for spending in advertisement, the returns on that spending. So I guess I'm looking at really cutting back and drawing way back on the monies that we're putting out and having out there, and more of that money being committed to water and water research than advertising. Those are my concerns.
And again, 72% of all COSA DC funding is dedicated to water and voter-approved projects. 28% is dedicated to everything else.
That everything else, including admin and everything. So that's why I wanted to discuss it and know the direction that maybe the COSA DC board was seeing, was if it's different than what we're seeing, or if I'm just being too tight up here and wanting us to control those expenses a little better.
I think, like I say, I think the board is, would welcome whatever guidance they can get, specific guidance they can get from council.
Well, I did, before I left town, I did talk to my appointee, Scott Tankersley, and he did tell me that he, they had, or he had noticed that maybe there wasn't some production, and that he suggested that they have one more year to show some sort of show for the dollar.
That is correct. That's on the other two items, on the TMCN.
That's on the other two items, that's not on this one item, so, and I understand that, and I support what they're trying to do, but that's got to be conveyed back to all of the council to make sure we're in agreement and on the same page that the board is.
And as, in keeping with that same concept, a number of the board members have specifically stated that they are willing to finance TMCN and High Ground for one more year, but they want to see results. And if they don't see results, then we're going to look, the board is going to look at other alternatives.
So High Ground comes due in February, March. We've already paid it for this year, so we will be paying it in 2014, and then there's got to be...
Then that would be the last, yes, ma'am. Along those same lines, we're about to look at the chamber contract for the current fiscal year, and the, the board has appointed a couple of board members to a committee to work on those negotiations, and they did ask that we extend an invitation to council to participate in those negotiations, and we could have up to three council members on that committee if they so desire. We would do that, I mean, be council volunteers. I don't know that we can necessarily do that today, but we can certainly bring that back as a specific item if council is interested, and I think it would be valuable to have council input in that negotiation. And in setting those goals for COSA DC performance measures, I'm sorry, for the chamber, performance measures for the chamber, and just what direction do we want to go?
And I think the chamber is interested in knowing what council's wishes are, too. They'd like to get to the end of the year, get a pat on the back, so they want to know what they're shooting for.
Absolutely.
I just know that looking at the line item detail and our expenses, you know, every item you can work out to have a justification, but our bottom line is, are we getting what we're paying for?
I agree, ma'am.
Well, you know, on the, on the other two items, I think the, I happen to be here at the meeting, and I think the majority of the board were very much in support of either those producing results or being done away with after this next fiscal year. And, you know, 20 Under 40, I think that's an important program. We need to do everything possible to retain our young people to stay here, to develop businesses and purchase businesses, whatever it takes for retention, and we need to be supporting our small, local businesses. So I think they discussed it very well, and I commend them for taking the stand they took.
And I, too, was at that meeting, and I share what Marty said, and they, they had a good discussion on this, and they delved into it. And I, too, I think this 20 Under 40 is one of the most important things they do, because I've worked real hard to keep my three sons in San Angelo, and I know that Marty and Fleming and Johnny all have kids. It's very important to all of us. This is very important that we keep our children in San Angelo. And just like they said, on these other two deals, they said they would look at it, and if it's not pay, if it's not paying out, then they would discontinue. And I've got, I've got no problem with leaving it just like it is. They made their decision as a board, I think it was a 6-1 vote.
That's correct, sir.
It was a 6-1 vote, but six of them said they want to continue like this. I have no problem staying with them. Anybody else have anything you want to say on this? It is a discussion item.
It's just, yeah, just to discuss.
Are we through with it? Anybody from the public want to talk on this? Okay, let's move on. Number 26.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rodney. Number 26, "Discussion and consideration of hosting a joint meeting with city council, Tom Green County Commissioners Court, and the San Angelo Independent School District trustees regarding the coordination of shared resources." And this is something that I have asked for, and let me give you a little bit of an idea of what, what I'm talking about here. We have got a school board that is elected by the citizens in Tom Green County. We've got the county commissioners that are elected and supported by people in Tom Green County, and we have the city council that is, that are elected and supported by the citizens of Tom Green County. And with the exception of, I think I know three of the school, four of the school board members, I don't know two of them. I know a couple of the county commissioners, I don't know all of them. They don't know us, we've got a new group here. I just want for the city to host a meeting. I'd like to do it here, and I would like for it to be at night. I would like it to be an evening meeting, but I would like for the city to host a meeting, and let's have the school board members here, and let's have school administration, let's have our county administrators, our county representative, our county commissioners, our county government, let's have them here, and let's, let's just sit back, let's sit back and talk. And I'd like to have, and the meeting shouldn't last more than two hours. I'd like to have maybe 30 minutes of, of public participation, where people come up and make statements, or their wishes, or, and then maybe an hour and a half where the city, and the county, and the school just essentially visits. We get to know each other, because there are many, many things that we can do as taxing entities, that we can do as a partnership, instead of three different entities going three different rays, hitting the taxpayers on three different times. So I just want to get our county, and our school, and our city together. I want to get to know each other. I want to get a camaraderie there, I want a working partnership, and I would like for the city to host this and bring it together. And that's, that's all it is. It's just getting together to know our counterparts, so that if there is any opportunity of further partnerships, we would be able to explore these things. And I think it'll make the city money, I think it'll make the county money, and I think it'll make the school money. And that's, that's it in a nutshell. Does anybody agree with me? Do you want to, want to do it, or you want to say no?
I certainly have no problem with it. I think it would, might be good. Now, your, your two hours is usually, you know, your 15-minute breaks are usually 30 minutes, so when you say two, are we talking four?
No, no, I got Winky down here. Winky, Winky will shut us down in two hours. Well, Winky was down there. Wink, Winky will, if not Don will. So let, I, you know, we could set a limit on this of, let me say approximately two hours.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I too like the idea. Are you thinking about maybe talk about certain topics, having a agenda, and a roundtable discussion type of setting, or what do you think?
I'm thinking more of a roundtable discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, let's just throw it out there.
Yeah.
And let's ask, let's ask the city, let's ask the county, let's ask the school. What can we do to work together so that we can give the very best possible results for the taxpayer dollars? What can we do to work together? And that's, that's kind of what I want. And I'm thinking that maybe with the public, with, giving some public input, we'll probably get a whole lot to talk about that. And I'm thinking that maybe with the public, with, giving some public input, we'll probably get a whole lot to talk about there. And that's why I'd like to do it at night. We seen our last meeting. We got a, we got a lot of participation, and I'd like to do it again.
I think, I think if you do that and mix it all up, and not just us seven together, and, you know, just kind of, you know, mix it up, I think.
Will you agree with me, Charlotte, to do this?
Hey, I just want to vote.
That's what I wanted, and that's the discussion. So if I've got council consensus on this, I would like to, I would like for staff to set this up. And January, February, whenever we can get everyone together, and let's have a meeting, and let's get to know each other. So.
Have you touched base with school board or county?
I touched base with Art Hernandez on the school board, asked him what he thought about it. He said, "I like the idea." And I've talked to county commissioner. They said, "I like the idea." So, I don't know. If, if it doesn't do any good, then we wasted the meeting. But if we can, if we can get some partnerships together and save a dollar somewhere down the road, then it's, it's been worthwhile. So if council will support me on this, I'm going to direct staff to make the arrangements and put it together. Do you want to say something, Turner? Any other public comment on this? You know the drill, buddy.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and I like the idea of the meeting. But I think what might be helpful, if nothing else, is just a handout. We already have a pretty good history of agreements and areas where we work together, just like with MHMR that was talked about earlier today with that. And having that list of how we're already cooperating to kind of give us a starting point. Here's what we're doing. We can build on this. I think would be good background information, if nothing else. That is part of the preparation, I think, for this. And would give it a little bit more cohesion and direction because this is where we're starting from. And have that available, if nothing else, like I say, as a handout, a slideshow, whatever. This is how the city, the school board, the county, and even there's some other government organizations around that we're working in on emergency management, et cetera, that it makes a lot of sense to say, this is what we're trying to expand on. And if, not so much get more money, but make better use of the money that we're already taking from the taxpayers. Thank you.
I can't see that it'll do any harm, and I think it will only do, I think it will only help. So staff?
We'll work on it.
Oh, right, sir. Okay, the next thing is "Consideration and Possible Action on Matters Discussed in Executive Closed Session." We discussed about three or four items in the executive. One of them was the Christian Village, and we talked about some drainage issues on a piece of property. We did not make a decision on that. We will have a presentation at our next council meeting, some engineer perspectives on this. So after we get the engineer perspectives, then we will, we will go into this further. But as of right now, there is nothing on the Christian Village. The West Texas Partnership, there is a bill for $29,529.11. That is due. That is from Phase One of the West Texas Partnership. We have already approved most of this. This was an additional couple of bills that came in. This is lawyer fees, consultants fees that needs to be paid. And I will entertain a motion. Yes, ma'am.
That will go on to COSA DC for reimbursement?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Yes, that's part of the water deal. But anyway, we do need to pay this bill. We owe it. San Angelo, Medland, and Abilene are all one-third equal partners in this water partnership. This is our share of this. So if I could get someone to make a motion that we approve this.
I move that we pay that bill. And it is the, the, the end of Phase One.
Yes. And I think we need to make that, I think we need to make that as part of the motion, that this is the end of Phase One, and that we will not, we're not paying anymore on Phase One. Now, we have already approved to go into Phase Two, which is a different, which is a different category. But that this will end pays, Phase One expenditures.
And it will come out of half-cent sales tax.
And it will come out of half-cent sales tax. Is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Somebody want to second it? I got a motion. I've got a second. Any further council discussion? Any discussion from the public on this? I will call for the motion. All in favor of paying the $29,529.11 that we owe the West Texas Partnership, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Five oh vote on that. We also spoke about the grazing and the recreational leases on city-owned land. This also is under consideration. We are looking at this. We have not, we have not dealt with this, with these grazing and leasing prices since 1982. So there is a possibility in 30 years that possibly some of these property leases have changed. We have directed staff to look into this, to get us a total list of these things. And we will be bringing that back for discussion and for approval or, but we have at this time, there is nothing to be said. Okay, on the next thing that we dealt with was the APAC, I believe it was. Can't find my, can't find my notes here.
Can you hand it?
ACAP, A-C-A-P Health. We had a, we had a presentation in our October 15 meeting where a man came in and said that the city owes us money for things that he felt that we owed him. And the statement is, "We discussed the options for settlement of ACAP's claim, and we do not have a sufficient basis or sufficient information to make or reach any decision on the matter." And I suppose we do need to put this in a form of a motion and vote on it?
Yes.
So I will ask if anyone will put this in a form of, "We discussed the options for settlement in ACAP's claim, and we do not have a sufficient basis or sufficient information to make or reach any decision on the matter." Will somebody put that in a form of a motion? Will somebody second it? I got a motion. I've got a second. Any further discussion? Any discussion from the floor? I will call for the, for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? We now, and that will deal with the items that we discussed in our executive. There is nothing else to do. Well, we took care of 28 right there with our, we've already taken care of, that's it. And number 28, I guess we took, took care of it out of the executive items because this is what we were talking about, the 29, the 29, 5, 29, 11. So item number 28, we have already voted on. It's a five oh vote to accept and to pay for the cost on Phase One. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Start with you, Rodney. Do you have anything, sir?
I'll send them later this week.
Okay.
Morning.
I'll send, I don't have any.
Report appointments.
What are we going to talk about next month?
Yes, that's something else that we must talk about in our meetings, yes. Johnny?
I wanted to make sure that we got Don's items on, on the agenda. The half-cent sales tax money and the stormwater fee. So I want to make sure that that's coming to us here one day soon.
You have that, Ms. Maris? Charlotte, do you have anything to add, ma'am?
Yes, it's not an agenda item, but I would like to ask Michael to convey to Daniel the reports that we used to get with reference to COSA DC that helped us know the '99 ballot, the 2004 ballot, and the 2010 ballot, what approved and what amounts. We used to get a quarterly report. I have not received one since February of 2012. And February 21st, 2012. And it's very, very helpful to know what we're committed to by ballot. And I would like the council to at least get this report quarterly.
Bob's in the room, and he'll, he and I'll discuss what kind of reports they're routine, he's routinely doing for that.
This was something that Shane developed, Shane, Sean developed, and started providing, you know, to council. And it, it was just very helpful to know what monies came out of what pot.
Will, do you want something, you want that redeveloped? Bob, do you know if they're still being provided with that report? Or did they streamline that process? Bob has streamlined some of the processes since he's been working on those issues.
That is a, a report that, quite frankly, with, with very limited staff, we have not been doing that annual report. I think as we, as we staff back up, that's easily something we can bring back on. I can do them in a very brief form if, if council would like.
Accuracy is better than.
Speedy.
Speed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, there was one other item we need to discuss, and that was our December meeting dates. We are scheduled right now for a meeting on December the 3rd and also December 17th. Do we want to keep those? Do we want to go to one meeting in December? Give me some, give me some input, council. What, what do you think about it? One? Charlotte says one. What do y'all say?
Make a motion, Charlotte.
I think we have some posting requirements for the December 17th meeting. AJ? Yes, we do. So we have already made public notices that we were going to hold that December 17th.
So we have to be here on the 17th?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to be here on the 3rd? Do we want to be here on the 3rd?
Yes.
We have to be here on the 3rd? Looks to me like that's a problem suddenly set.
Well, because of the, they've posted, she could.
But it, but since we posted, do we have to conduct business?
It's a legal notice that a hearing was going to be held on December 3rd and December 17th.
But we can repost about the 17th?
It's possible to do it. She would just have to repost those and notify those applicants.
Repost the 17th. Is that?
Well, it can be reposted. It's.
I'm about ready to. I don't mind meeting on the 3rd and the 17th. I don't mind two meetings. But it's, it's council, you know, what a council's, whatever council thinks.
That's fine.
But I've already got a motion to adjourn from Charlotte. It's good quickly.
Are you okay with it?
It's staff, not my, not my items. We have other departments.
Somebody say what you want. I don't care.
Maintain the schedule.
Yeah, let's have it.
That's just me.
That's me.
With me to get on December 3rd, then.
And did you say you did have a motion?
I sure did. Charlotte made it. Somebody going to second it? Let's say aye and get out of here. This meeting is over.